Hi, if councilors could take their seats, we'll begin. Good evening, welcome to the November 6, 2025 Barnstable Town Council meeting. In accordance with Mass. Journal of Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make your presence known. Seeing no one, this meeting is being recorded and televised live via Xfinity Channel 8, Channel 1070, and High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel livestream feed on the town website, the My Barnstable app, and the dedicated Barnstable streaming app. At this point, I would like to recognize, we have to do a roll call, excuse me. Roll call first.
Counselors. Bloom.
Here.
Berdick.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Ludke.
Here.
Mendez.
Neary.
Here.
Penn.
Here.
Schnapp.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
We have 12.
Thank you, we do have a quorum. At this point, I would like to recognize Counselor Ludke, who will introduce our veteran.
Thank you, President Tamish. We talked about this last month, that we had the 250th anniversary of the U.S. Navy, and we had two wonderful Navy veterans. This month is the 250th birthday of the Marine Corps, and we have an absolutely outstanding Marine Corps veteran representing the Marine Corps tonight. I'll be reading about him in a bit, but I wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, he was in force reconnaissance, and those who don't know what that is, it's quite something. It's something very hard to do and very, very difficult, so I just honor him for that. That's incredible that you were a force recon troop. We have a few photos up that you can see. There he is in, I don't know if that's actually in Vietnam or heading to Vietnam, but there he is when he was a younger man than he is today. And in the second picture, you see him holding a trophy. We'll hear about, in his biography, about his fishing program for veterans, and he's holding the trophy there for the person who got the largest fish. And then there he is with some wonderful children. We have Haley and Austin on either side of him, and they are children of an Air Force veteran, and they helped him put together goodie bags for one of his events. And I think one of them was born in Las Vegas and the other one in Alaska, as is the case with veterans, they move around quite a bit. So let's now hear about our veteran for this evening. Thank you. I have been told that the Marines are a bit more formal than the Navy. So here we are, celebrating the Marines' 250th birthday coming up on November 10. The Marines' first recruitment drive occurred in Philadelphia at Ton Tavern in 1775. The Marines remain 250 years young. Please welcome Corporal Robert F. Elliott of the First Reconnaissance Battalion, Delta Company. He was born in New Rochelle, New York, and is one of three kids. He graduated high school in 1965 and spent two years working before voluntarily enlisting in the Marine Corps in September 1966. His goal was to serve in Vietnam, and he achieved this. His basic training was in Paris Island, South Carolina. He transferred to Camp Lejeune, Camp Geiger, for infantry training. He wanted to go into force reconnaissance, and the Marines knew they had a live one in Bob. He tried out for two days and was accepted into that program, where he had trained then for another 12 to 15 months. After training above and below the sea, he operated as a safety diver for pilot training in New London, Connecticut. He became an instructor alongside SEAL Team 2 in Virginia Beach in 1967, and taught naval midshipmen cadets and reserve units in obstacle course and water endurance training. Part of his training included time in Virginia Beach for amphibious rubber boat training. Bob's strong swimming skills and rowing skills were of value to him, even in the cold springtime waters of Virginia. He recalls timing the waves so the boat didn't capsize, making use of the lull between waves to row through the rough seas, and mostly, he wanted to avoid putting the boat and its occupants into the face of the waves. He had further reconnaissance training and escape and evasion training. As a Lance Corporal, he was in California before finally landing in Vietnam in April 1968. Soon into his time, he was given his team, known as Mayfly. Although he would lead small teams up to eight on patrol, he was fully responsible for a team of 15. He was deployed on 15 patrols, all told. He left Vietnam in September of that same year. Once home, Bob was eager to get back to his family and get further education. He can still recall the huge embrace from his dad like he had never felt before. His dad, Frank J. Elliott, was a Staff Sergeant and landed on D-Day 3. Bob earned many educational degrees and accolades. He taught for 20 years, split between junior high and middle school. Bob enjoyed teaching kids to use their hands, their heads, and their mouths. Bob permanently landed on Cape Cod in 1994 and started Vets Fishing with Vets in 2005. His membership of the NOM Vets, where he served and the Board of Directors twice, led to him to begin the Veterans Appreciation Outing. Vets Fishing with Vets may have been Bob's idea, but its success and longevity are a result of his team's efforts, logistics, donations, and time. And I would be remiss to not mention Yvette, that is sitting beside him, that helps him with all of his fishing and does a lot of the paperwork and works on the Helen H. that is based in Hyannis. Thank you, Yvette, for all your help. And he's also got Jim Gross sitting with him. Okay. He is fortunate for the support of a few long-term members who make this event a success 20 years on. The Helen H., under Captain Joe Huckemeyer, serves as the motor vessel and has served 1,500 or more vets from all branches of service. Bob has gained unique insight into the lives of those who have paid a higher price than he. For many of the vets, this is their first time setting foot on a boat. This boating excursion brings kindness, camaraderie, and an opportunity for vets to all be on the same level with other vets. Bob is grateful to be here, so close to this milestone in Marine history, and would like to thank past, present, and future Marines. Let's welcome Corporal Robert F. Elliott to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for
As Vice President of Sales for the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, Patty Lloyd expanded the reach of the Cape Cod experience to national and international sports groups, including organizations in figure skating, hockey, baseball, soccer, volleyball, and golf. She worked closely with the Hyannis Youth and Community Center to attract large-scale regional, national, and international events to the venue and probably represented Barnstable Golf at trade shows and conferences. Patty's support for the Hyannis Youth and Community Center began during its construction, and whenever she was involved in an event, her dedication and exceptional customer service were evident from start to finish. Our deepest sympathies go out to Patty's family and friends. The second person I'd like to recognize is Joanne Brito Crippen. Joanne also recently passed away. Joanne was a classmate of mine, Barnstable High School, classes 69, and she was also a classmate of mine at the Barnstable County Police Academy when it was in existence. Joanne was the first female officer on the Barnstable Police Department, and she was the first black female officer on the police department, so we would certainly recognize her for those accomplishments and breaking that barrier. So if we could have a moment of silence for them and for all who have lost their lives Public comment. Please make sure you sign in with your name and village for public comment. Public comment is three minutes. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. Written comments are always welcome at council@town.barnstable.m-a.us and will be distributed to the entire council. I wish to remind everyone that no member of the public may speak without first being recognized by the presiding officer. The public will have an opportunity to speak during public comment portion of the meeting and during any public hearing on an agenda item. You are free to express your thoughts, opinions, and criticisms during public comment. However, your comments must be directed to the council as a body through the presiding officer. You may not speak directly to any individual counselor. You also should not be addressing your comments to anyone else in this room, not to town staff, and not to another member of the audience. Public comment is to be directed to the council. So, having said that, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. My name is Heather Rockwell, and I would like to speak briefly on Agenda Item 2026-054 regarding the conservation restriction on Marie Mallow's property at 755 Lumburt Mill Road. My husband and I have lived at 799 Lumburt Mill Road for the past 28 years. Our property directly abuts Marie's, and we consider ourselves lucky to have her as a neighbor sharing the acres of woodlands that surround our properties. Our sons grew up playing in these woods, climbing the trees, and walking the paths over to their schools. This conservation restriction will protect wildlife habitat, preserve open space, and protect groundwater and drinking water quality. I strongly urge the council to approve this conservation restriction by Marie Mallow to Barnstable Land Trust on 5.58 acres of property at 755 Lumburt Mill Road. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you to Marie for her generous gift of this conservation restriction to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Can I be next?
Certainly.
I'm the one that left you guys those little packets there. Actually, this is what I delivered two and a half years ago.
Okay, could you, first of all, go to the mic and identify yourself, please?
I'm Elizabeth Derry from 14 Potter Avenue, and this is what I delivered two and a half years ago, because you had a hearing about 11 Potter Avenue, which was an office building, and the owner wanted to convert it, not to family, oh no, high-density, five apartments in 2,000 square feet. So the neighborhood, we got together, and we created a petition, and more than half of the single-family homeowners signed, but you guys overturned us, and you allowed them to put those five apartments in, and they're aimed to be finished next year. Against what we, we even did a petition, and Matthew, you were here when I delivered them, and we were completely ignored. And Jen Villa's father, Jen Villa, the famous Jen Villa, her father was approved just like that, even though we had a petition. Now, why are we so upset? Because on the other side, we have this. This is the ancient cemetery that you designated ancient, so our neighborhood is historic just because of that sign. And yet, what did you do? You allowed an illegal building to be constructed in the residential area, making that commercial. And guess where the fourth side of the building is? The woman that bought it two years ago bought three sides of an illegal building. I own the fourth side, it's on my property. She can't even, if the window breaks, she can't fix it. Why would she buy three sides? Because she's a foreign-born, okay, and her boyfriend is the program director of the autistic kids, and he got her a no-bid contract. She makes at least 50 grand a year on three sides of a building, housing autistic kids, and her boyfriend's the program director. Well, I'm sitting on my bathroom, in my bathroom one day, I look out, and he's that program director. He looks like Gavin Newsom, the governor, with a slicked-back hair, tall, handsome. He's getting a full back rub from the same blonde autistic girl that appeared here with the Great Streets project to sell you guys on it. She was the one picking her nose. I do tell them autistic, but I do it in private.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
The same girl was giving this man a full back rub. I was a guardian ad litem for 12 years. You don't touch children in your class or anything like, this blonde was giving him a full back rub, and I had an opportunity to report that to a judge, and the judge didn't want to hear it. Elizabeth, can you wrap it up, please? This is what we're dealing with, all right? And so I'm sandwiched between these two problems at 14 Potter Ave. And I might add, my dad is one of the guys that started the Habitat for Humanity, and he went out and got all the suppliers. He worked for John Hinckley and Son for 75 years. He gave his life for this town, the church, and his family. Thank you, Elizabeth, your time is up. And this is what you did to him. He spent his retirement in the garage because he had no, no privacy. Three-story building.
Liz, could you finish up, please? Your three minutes are up.
That's cruel.
Liz, your three minutes are up.
And so we don't want any more torturous housing, and that's what you're building now, and so a lot of us are opposed to it. And really, your conscience should bother you to just charge forward when people, we live here.
Good evening, councilmembers. Matt Tagg from Barnstable Village, also Vice President of the Home Builders Association of Massachusetts. I want to, I'm here tonight to ask for your strongest support to reconsider your adoption of the stretch code. I wanted to clarify a couple of misinformation that was put out at the original hearing. Number one, I believe Mr. Bloom asked, how long is a, what is the course requirement to become a HERS writer? It's 20 hours, all you could be one by Monday. I'll put that in perspective, that designation has the same power as a professional engineer stamp when it comes to getting a building permit now in this town. To become a professional engineer with no undergraduate education, it is a 20-year requirement, 20 years. Or you can take a 20-hour course, work for a year, and now you can stop me from getting a building permit. One of the things I want to remind you of is that the DOE representatives admitted that their information that they put out is fictitious, it omits occupant behavior. That's an exact quote from the hearing, I'm not sure you guys heard that. "It omits occupant behavior," right? So it's just like a thing, not real, gives people false hope. I think one of the hard things, if the general public understands this, is that by adopting the stretch code, you are beginning to sell energy choice and energy freedom out for a number. It's 500,000 bucks, maybe $700,000. That's not enough money to build one tiny house. A thousand-square-foot house costs about that to build. So I think you should probably leave the money in people's wallets, not take it from the state, and not sell the stuff out. I'll leave you with this. You are leaders in this town, and what's really important, as I see this American flag's up here, and we talked about our great Marine Corps veteran here, leaders of character are what are important, okay? So you have a choice tonight. When you get invited to the graduation, which I hope some of you attend, and shake the hands of those young Barnstable High School graduates, you can look them in the eye and say, "I made it easier for you to come back and live in this town after you've gone out and gotten educated and learned your trade or done whatever you did," or you can do nothing and not reconsider the bill, and look them in the eye and say, "I made it a little harder and a little more expensive for you to move back here because you're too dumb to make your own decisions." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nicole. I'm inquiring about questions regarding the Chief of Police. I have heard information that he's retiring in December, so I'm inquiring if there is going to be a search committee, if there's going to be, his replacement will be in internal promotion, and also, sorry, I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget anything when I got up here. Is there going to be an extensive search that would include outside candidates opposed to just the inside promotion? And will there be an interim chief or an acting chief appointed, and if so, has that person been picked or decided upon? And also, based on the recent issues within the department, including the command staff, will the town be seeking someone to hold offices accountable? And will that be a point of focus in the committee that it will be hiring a new chief?
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Heather Swenson. I don't have anything written down, and usually I do. So in 15 days, I walked 128.34 miles doing door-knocking, according to my Fitbit. In those 128-plus miles, some of those roads were death-defying to be walking on. So I know there's discussion coming up relating to speed limit on roads, and I would highly encourage you to consider the lowering of speed limits on some of our roads. Water quality, windmills, searing, top questions, top conversations I had with people while door-knocking, but you know what was top of the list for anybody outlying from like right around the lake or anything? Speed limit. And as I said, death-defying. I noticed today, I made sure to make a drive over, Hyannis Port on Scudder has a really nice little solar-powered flashing light thing telling you that it's 20 miles an hour, and they also have these nice little pretty carved wooden signs that say 20 miles an hour, and those signs are still up. I live on a one-lane, half a mile long, I live at the end of a half a mile, one-lane road, and when I say one lane, I mean most of my road, if you come across another car while you're driving on it, someone has to back up to the nearest driveway so that two cars can pass. When I moved there in 2012, we had two speed limit signs on that half a mile stretch that said 15 miles an hour. Recently, somebody asked for a dead-end sign on that road. Town came out, put up a dead-end sign, but guess what they did? They took down our 15-mile-an-hour signs. And when I asked why the 15-mile-an-hour signs were taken down, I was told because they're not enforceable. So now that means that a one-lane, dead-end road, people can drive 30 miles an hour on it. So I'm questioning why some people have been asking for lower speed limits, being told that it's not enforceable. Signs are taken away from some neighborhoods, while some other neighborhoods have really nice carved signs and flashing town-put-up, I assume, solar-powered signs telling you 20 miles an hour. So I hope that there will be something done that will make that even for everybody in the town, not just for a select few. Thanks, guys.
Good afternoon or evening, whatever it is. I'm Larry Moore from Katuat, I've been up here many times. This is an interesting situation for many of us, because more than two and a half years ago, I had the opportunity to work with new candidates for the class of 23. There were six new members of the town council who were elected that year, and for most, for almost all of them, I either met them at their home, or they came to my house, or we met at a neutral site. In the process of doing that, I learned a great deal about how the town council works. I also learned a great deal about the individual personalities and chemistry that exist within this body. But what I really learned about is who are the people that really dug into it and gave a lot of their time and energy to get to the top of the ladder? I don't, I'm not here to name anybody except one person. There's only one person in the class of 23 that is not going to be back here after tonight, that's Kristen Turkelson. Nobody can match her, in my view. What she has done, she started off learning fast, she started, when she was campaigning, she was already working to identify the issues that needed to be addressed. She's non-stop the whole 24 months, and in the process of doing that, she's the one that stood up more regularly and spoke that we're here for the people, not for yourselves. She's the one that did that repeatedly, she did it in front of committees, she did it here. Now, I'm not saying that the rest of you don't think that way, or you don't say it, but that's something that maybe, she's leaving a lot behind. We can't fill a void like that, and all I can tell Kristen is thank you. But in the process of doing that, I'd like to see what she did in her 24 months here, let's see how many people of you can emulate that. It's going to be an interesting observation, and so I wish that some of you aren't going to be here. Paul's not going to be here. Jeff's not here. We know who's not going to be here. But the important, Paula, so the important thing is, is that there's a lot of carryover we learned from those of you that are here, and I think every one of you that serves, whether it's six, eight, or 10, or 12 years, I think you all have a lot of sentiment and a lot of things that you've given. And in the process of doing that, I've gotten, I've heard a lot of positive comments, but if there's any negative things, any things where you're not communicating, get it out, get it over with. Start communicating with each other openly and positively. Let's see how it goes. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Anyone online, Lynn?
I have one more question.
No, one, one bite of the apple, Liz.
Back to the next meeting?
Yes, you certainly may, you're more than welcome to.
All that water went that was on Dumont Drive, it looks like somebody pumped it all up.
All right.
We do have someone online, we have Sandy Jones. Sandy, you may unmute, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, councilors, my name is Sandy Jones. I actually was with Heather Swenson as we were walking through Precinct 2 over two and a half weeks, and we visited 1,500 homes. I just wanted to bring back some information to the we visited 1,500 homes. I just wanted to bring back some information to the council that we heard while knocking on these doors. Again, Heather mentioned speeding was an issue. The proposed three-story apartment building that is under review for Great Marsh Hill Road and the traffic in that area. And lastly, the disconnect between the town and its residents. In 2023, I stood before you in September of 2023, I was in that same neighborhood door knocking, but on 200 doors. And I was told the exact same story from the residents. Again, they feel disconnected. They're not quite sure how to be involved in town government. We have a wonderful, extensive website, but it's very difficult to maneuver. Many don't receive a Cape Cod Times anymore. But anyways, I wanted to bring the information we heard back. I realize I have three minutes. We had stories about sewer installations gone wrong, where the homeowners hired a company to come out and connect them to the sewer-ing on the street. They were missing stubouts. Sewer stubouts were placed in the wrong location. And there was a lack of responsibility and urgency from the DPW staff. We also heard from residents that speeding, speeding on Finney's Lane, Shuffeline Hill Road, Old State Road, and the side streets, and their complaints felt as though they fell on deaf ears. Meetings with the, I hate to say this again, the DPW director and the staff, and they just felt that their concerns went unheard. I ask you, I'm not sure quite what it is, but to somehow bridge that gap between the homeowners and our leaders, we will have a new town council. I hope that we have ad hoc committees, again, comprised of residents and councilors, to facilitate the exchange and of diverse perspectives and ideas. They're a valuable tool. The tireless efforts of Councilors Clark, Mendez, Turkelson, Crowe, Starr, Lucky, and Burdick, I'm sure there's others, and the residents provided valuable insights for the council. It was previously suggested that the ad hoc committees were unnecessary and that the issues could have been addressed on the dais. And that, again, would have excluded resident input. I recall a story that Council Lucky shared that citizens approached the town to establish a policy for residential tax credit, only to be initially denied. Fortunately, they later received the support. And we owe a debt of gratitude to this grassroots group for our tax credit on property taxes. As the people who contribute to our government by electing you, I hope the new councilors moving forward, will move forward with respect, consideration, and unity. Please work together because we're counting on you. And thank you, Councilor Turkelson and Councilon Neri, for serving the Senneville, the Village of Senneville. And we appreciate all of your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Two quick points. The first one is there's so many vets that are not here tonight. So what we did, we brought this little flag, is to tell the veterans that are home that Barnstable, the town of Barnstable, Cape Cod, really cares about veterans. Thank you for your service. If you are a veteran here or online, wherever you are, that's something from my heart that I wanted to make sure was done. That's the first one. And the second one is, six months ago, I was asked if I ever wanted to do this. And at a particular point in time, my life was kind of changing around a little bit. And what took place on that particular day is I thought about, I said, well, I'll let that person know. Well, as it got closer, in the 250th year, came up for the birthday Marine Corps, I raised my hand, I put my hat in the endeavoring, and here I am. And that's because of Councilwoman Turkelson. And I want to thank you, Kirsten, from my heart, for everything you did in helping me and all the other vets along the line. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Anybody that got a flag that's sitting here, we got plenty.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Lynn, anyone else? Any further public comment in the room? Seeing none, we did receive one email comment from the West Barnstable Civic Association, letter in support of the appropriation of the conservation restriction in West Barnstable. Council response to public comment. I won't go into detail because it's still in flux, but to the young lady that was inquiring about whether the chief of police would be retiring in December, she is not. When she does decide to retire, it will be a public process that everyone will know what the process is. And if you had any further specific questions about that, the town manager, I'm sure, would be happy to meet with you or discuss that with you. Any further response to public comment? Council Lucky?
Yes, a few things. Let's see. To Elizabeth's point, and I know you've spoken before, and we just passed, I believe, at the last meeting, we had a couple of amendments. We did the zoning subcommittee, correct? That's going to be in place. Zoning is problematic. You live in downtown Hyannis. It is problematic. And I agree with you, it's very difficult. The few precious areas we are, have, one being the ancient cemetery, you know, we need to be more careful in how we do our zoning. And I know the planning board is looking at that right now. And they even flagged some things. If you went to their meeting, you might want to think about doing that, because they're looking at those right now. And they wisely, we had Matt Tagg here, they wisely asked for some more time to study some of them. Because it's very difficult. Transitions are enormously difficult, and you're living in a transition zones there. So I appreciate your comments. Okay, and let's see. Matt Tagg, certainly appreciate your comments. I can see both sides of this. I think tonight, we have the opportunity to put off the enactment of the stretch code until July, to give a little more time, frankly, to do that. I don't know that there's a, there's an aptitude to revisit the question itself. Heather Swenson, absolutely. I live in Hyannis Port. There's an extremely robust and well-funded civic association there. They're the ones that put up those signs. They're completely unenforceable. I'm not sure why they're there, but they're there. But they are unenforceable. But they make a point. And speeding is rampant throughout this town. And I think we should lower the speed limit throughout the town. I mean, all you have to do is read the Hyannis News to read about the latest crashes. I mean, my son is 19. Three of his friends have totaled vehicles, three of them. I mean, that's absurd. And the speeding is, you know, it may not stop that. But if we did that and it was more visible, you know, perhaps there would be some, some movement towards slower speeds. It's a, it's not just the signs, I guess I'm saying. There's a lot of aspects to it. But the signs could help. But I understand what you're saying, that Hyannis Port is getting kind of a free ride, and other folks don't have that opportunity. And I agree. I agree. It's not a good look. Larry, I couldn't agree with you more about Kristin. She is a model to emulate. I don't know anyone who's been more studious, paid more attention, done more research, and spoken out more bravely than she. So thank you, Kristin. I will absolutely miss you. And Sandy, you kind of echoed the same things that Heather did on walking around. It does seem the same issues are never resolved. And we have to do a better job with that. And we'll continue to do that. But those things all need to be addressed. And we all need to do better to make this a town we all want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further response to public comment? Seeing none. Town manager communications. I'll give a brief summary. His full report is online, and there is a video version of it that is also online, and it's shown immediately prior to this meeting. Thursday, November 13th at 11:00 a.m., the town manager's calendar year fee hearing will be held. Again, Thursday, November 13th at 11:00 a.m. On October 31st, the town of Barnstable submitted comments to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities regarding the draft regulations for seasonal communities. Again, that complete letter is online under the town manager's report. For those who are interested, Town Council Agenda Item 2026-046 is a technical correction to Item 2026-014, which was approved by the town council on October 9th, adopting the stretch code. This item changes the effective date of the stretch code from January 1st, 2026, to July 1st, 2026. It does not reopen the item. The town is currently updating its open space and recreation plan. That is available for public review at this point. And a community meeting will be held Wednesday, November 19th at 6:00 p.m. in person at Town Hall. Beginning Wednesday, November 12th, at Sandinack Beach, the Long-Term Coastal Resiliency Project will enter Phase 3, where they're going to be moving the gatehouse. And that area will have some restricted access. Also, October 28th, the town commenced the construction of a new straightaway water treatment facility, a vital component of the town-owned Barnstable water system. And you're going to be hearing a little bit more from the Hyannis Water Department in a bit. And good news for a lot of people, oyster season opened on Wednesday, November 5th. And please check the town website for details. Any comment or questions for the town manager? Council Lucky?
I wondered if Mark might give us a little bit more information on that Blue Economy Symposium that you attended? Because I think that's critical to our future. And we mentioned earlier, we had the Helen H. in Hyannis. And we do have coming before us at some point the acquisition of perhaps some property on the waterfront. And I'd just like to hear a little bit more what they talked. You said there's emerging trends. What does it look like? Are we going the right way? Are we, you know, what did you determine from that?
Thank you. Good evening, Mark Elstoun, manager. You know, it was, it was a forum, really, to bring business and the community together, to look at what some of the barriers are to moving forward with blue economy opportunities. This has been going on for quite a while. This group is also being facilitated by the Community College now. So it was hosted there at the tech building at the Community College. The focus was really somewhat of a brainstorming session to talk about what sort of the, what are the, what are the current barriers to us advancing more opportunity for business in that blue economy marketplace? Meaning, you know, those things that, you know, certainly our ocean, but our, but our water, our environment, you know, are two other major areas. Some of the innovative approaches that we look to take here on Cape Cod. And then how do we build and retain a workforce to be able to support those efforts? It came back to the same issues that we talk about all the time, which is housing. And, you know, and how do we keep our youth here? And, you know, how do we make that affordable with a, with a living competitive wage when the demographics of Cape Cod are such that they don't necessarily match up with, with a younger workforce staying here? And so that's basically, it was about a two-hour forum. I gave a link so that anybody who's interested, I hope that you try to take the time and participate in it. Not always easy. It wasn't a, you know, it wasn't on Zoom. It was an in-person. But certainly, I or our staff will go. If you're on Cape Cod, to not be looking closely at what's going on and hoping that the blue economy efforts advance, I think you're missing the boat, quite honestly. And we're going to try to be as knowledgeable and participate as actively as we can. And we'll continue to provide updates, either myself or staff, as this progresses.
You mentioned staff. Who is, who's our point of contact within the town? I mean, you went, do we have a point of contact?
For the blue economy specifically, it has historically come through the planning director, and then typically Kyle, the assistant director, would be, would be personally engaged in it. I think that I've tried to create over the last decade, and actually been quite successful, pathways for our youth to not only enter into, enter into their education or continue their education, but also to enter into the workplace. We do it through, you know, more than a couple of dozen internships that are highly sought. We do it in, I was in discussions today with Cape Tech about creating other internships and other pathways to learn to work. So we spend a lot of time on that. I do that personally. I think the town manager has access to things that other people don't. And that should be one of many things that your town manager does. So it's a tough question, because there's a lot of pathways to who the point of contact should be. I hope I'm always in that loop. Because when the head of the chamber, or the head of the college, or our senator calls, they ought to call me, quite honestly. To delegate that down isn't that effective. So hold me accountable to how we progress on this.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think you should be the point of contact. I think it's too critical. I think you're right. There's too many tentacles to it. It's vital. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Penn?
Yes, thank you, President Tamish. I just wanted to make a comment that I thought Director Cutford's letter regarding seasonal communities, which was included in the town manager's report to us, was an excellent letter. I hope the state takes the suggestions that are in the letter for change seriously and implements them. So I just wanted to do a shout out for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none. Move on to the minutes. You've all been supplied with a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levecq.
Abstein.
Lucky.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Penn.
Abstein.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. Motion passed. Just as a point of information for the, for the audience, every vote tonight will be a roll call vote, because we have a hybrid meeting. We have councilors that are on Zoom. So we're, at that point, we're required to have a roll call vote on every measure. At this point, I'd like to recognize Town Clerk Ian Quirk to update us on the election.
Thank you very much. Okay. Congratulations to all of those who won the election. For four years on the school committee, we have Courtney West and Andre King, your town clerk. On the housing authority, we have Christopher Lawson and Eric Schwab for counselor for Precinct Two. We have Thomas Keen Jr. And I will tell you, Heather, we did look at every single ballot. You ended up with 354 votes. On Precinct Four, we have Craig Tamish. Precinct Six, we have William Crocker Jr. Precinct Eight, Lisa DeLuce. Precinct Ten, Matthew Levecq. And Precinct Twelve, Barry Scheingold. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. And I see future and past, Councilor Crocker is here, and congratulations to you on that. I don't think any other people have. No, I don't believe anyone else Council Clerk, if you could introduce our speakers?
Thank you, President Tamish. We have reports from our Boards Committee and Commissions. First on deck is Tom O'Neill, who chairs the Sandine Neck Board, its advisory to the, to the Sandine Neck staff. And welcome, Tom.
Thank you. Good evening, President Tamish, Vice President Clark, Town Counselors, and public. Appreciate the invitation to speak. As Chris said, Tom O'Neill's the name. I've been on the Sandine Neck Board since 2013. Been the Chair since 2018. It's been my honor to be the Chair, really. It's a great group. To summarize what I think is our key challenge as a board, it's really to influence, because we sit in amongst a lot of different constituents, stakeholders, users, Town Council, Town Manager, and many others, and, and, you know, we have to be able to influence change as opposed to direct it. At one time, the board actually ran the beaches, you probably know, back in 2003, that was changed when the management report was done by the town, and they put a professional management into the Sandine Neck. And they changed the, the kind of remit of the board at that time as well. In terms of composition, we have seven members. Pete Sampu is the Vice Chair, and he's also the Concom Rep. Renee King is the RecCom Rep. And then we have five at-large members, Rich French, Maureen Pichoni, Bill Carey, and Bill Monroe, and myself. I think probably somewhat unique to some of the committees in the town, we have 104 years of experience on the Sandine Neck Board and this, on this group. There's not much that's gone on at Sandine Neck that, you know, someone on this board has not been a part of or seen. It's also diverse. We have the board members that are obviously from RecCom and Concom, but also campers, daytrippers, fishers, fishermen, hunters, you name it, on the board. So, a lot of users on the board, so very, very intimately relating to the, to the, to Sandine Neck. We have the Barnstable Police Officer, Chris Kelsey, who really is a great asset to the team. He comes to most of the meetings. And the combination of, you know, good management team at Sandine Neck, good regulations, and support from the police has been critical to keeping Sandine Neck as calm and peaceful as it normally is, and you've seen other beaches where that's, that's not been the case. Town Council Liaisons, Gordon and Chris have been great, supportive, participate in the meetings, are active. And I just want to mention one more, the Mess Beach Buggy Association, just kind of a symbiotic relationship with Sandine Neck Board. They have at least one or two members that come to every meeting, and they do a lot to, to support Sandine Neck in a number of ways. And so, the cleanups, some stuff like that. But they also are good to bounce ideas off of, particularly when you get into things like fee discussions. So, very valuable relationship there. In terms of our purpose, it was defined in that management report in 2003, that we are to provide the Town Council and Town Manager with advice on strategic opportunities and risks impacting Sandine Neck, and really with a focus in four areas. Economic sustainability, we are an enterprise account, so we're basically a small business, therefore we need revenue, we need to be watching, watching our costs, and both in operating expenses and capital, but also figuring out new ways to bring in revenue. Secondly, conservation, sorry, I'm losing my voice, conservation and coastal resiliency. I'm not going to speak about the resiliency project much, you guys can read about it. It's a huge project. I was up there the other day with Nina, meeting with the Robert Hour guys, and it's really, really moving along really fast, so that's, it's great to see. Thirdly, public use, outreach, and education, really critical, continuing to expand the utilization of the facility. Earlier this year in May, we did a project with, just kind of a joint project with RecCom. We brought in a bunch, a busload of kids, third graders from, from Hyannis West, kids that, in a lot of cases, had never seen Sandine Neck and even knew it existed. So, these are the kind of things we need to continue to do. And then finally, the respective private interests, which really, you know, because we do have Cottage Colony, we have neighborhoods that we have to be mindful of, so that's another facet of our, of our relation, of our responsibility to maintain focus in those areas. I know when I was in the corporate world, we always said, you know, if you want to find out what's important, look at the agenda of the board. We, we did make each of these areas a standing agenda item at every meeting, so that every meeting, we will talk about these, these issues. And I've assigned a member of the board to be the lead person on each of these, in each of these areas. And that respect, their job is to bring in external perspectives, look at, you know, bring in new ideas, challenge the status quo, keep us thinking, keep us on our feet with new, new ideas. Next, in terms of functionality, we don't really have many issues, it's a pretty good board. Tenderness is good, we don't have any quorum issues. Where we have, have had some issues, we've addressed them. We have a very close relationship with the Sandine Neck team, and generally, I'd say good communications across all the stakeholders that we deal with. I think it's key to say that the board almost acts as a surrogate for the public, you know, that gives the public confidence that what we're doing is, is actually makes sense. They can look at us and say, well, those guys are from the public, they must have the right idea. And it also gives the Sandine Neck team a chance to bounce ideas off the public, in a sense, they can test-market ideas with the board and use that as a sounding board for some of the ideas that they come up with. Let's see, effectiveness, always a tricky one, I'm not going to get in a lot of detail. Obviously, you know about the resiliency project, which started, I was there when it started in 2015, we started talking about that project. Maybe a bit of endeavoring beyond reason, but we finally got there. And, you know, we had a lot of involvement in that, I was on the project team, the board had a lot of input into design options, to communications, which were critical. But we also needed to prepare financially for this project, so it's one thing to get it approved, it's another thing to pay for it. So, a lot of effort went into the grants from Nina and her team, but on the board level, we, we took a pretty strong view on looking at fees, that's our only lever, to try to increase some of our reserves, we knew we were going to need for filling in gap, gaps in the grants. And, but our traditional approach to free, fee increases was pretty incremental, it was typically, you know, five bucks a year or something. And it's always a very emotional topic. So I know from my experience that data is how you address these issues. So we did a study, looking back to 2009, at the usage at the beach, and it was pretty fascinating. Since two, from 2009 to present, the, the use of the beach from Barnstable residents was relatively flat, it went up 25%, which is not much over 15 years. So if you look at the curve, it was relatively flat. The use of the beach by out-of-towners had gone up exponentially, in fact, 86%. And there's a number of factors that undoubtedly went into that, but one of them was we were the cheapest option. And we, you know, we knew we were going to have to do something to increase the, the reserves particularly. So with that data, we did that first, and then we did a benchmarking study where we looked at all the other beaches, what were they charging, what services they provided. And Sandine Neck's kind of unique in that respect, we have more services at Sandine Neck available to users than most beaches, you know, I don't think there's any other beach you can ride a horse on. So we, we did that study, and we found out that we were low compared to everybody else. And so we knew we had some price elasticity with the, with the fees, because we could raise the fees potentially without losing customers, and that so far has been the case. So we developed a more bold strategy on, on fees, we had two years in a row where we increased the fees pretty significantly for out-of-town users. And another facet of that was, we want to make sure Barnstable people can get to the beach, because it does get closed at times because of use, and it's not really fair for us taxpayers to get closed out of the beach when, you know, everybody from Boston's getting on, so. So we did develop a pretty aggressive approach on fees, and that has resulted in about $100,000 a year in additional revenue, which is about 10% of the budget, so it's a pretty significant increase, which will be there, you know, forever, hopefully. So that's kind of the story. I mean, in the future, we're, we're going to work on a strat plan next year, we, we were going to do it this year, we have, I have a draft developed, my background kind of around that area, so, but we decided to put it to the side this year because of the project, it's just too much going on to distract Nina and her team right now, so we'll, we'll get into that next, probably next summer, when we're all celebrating the new, the new Sandine Neck.
Yeah, there you go.
Any questions?
Council Wadke?
Yeah, I, I think you said you can ride a horse there?
Yeah.
How do the horses get there?
They come in trailers.
Do you have a whole area?
No, they ride, they ride all through the, out through the marsh trails and...
No, but, so they come in a trailer?
Yeah.
But how many trail, I mean, do you have a limit on how many horse trailers you could...
You know, there aren't many that come, there were, there was at one time, I know a company that used to come out there more regularly. I think more, it's more haphazard now rather than frequent, but...
Because it seems like an attraction, right? That somebody would want to come and ride a horse through there.
Yeah, we, I mean, we also have, allow fires, which also are not allowed on a lot of the beaches, so it's, it's a, you know, it's a unique place in that respect, and, you know, deserves to have the proper competitive fee attached to it.
And how are the other ways you make money other than your fees?
Well, there's a couple other ways, the, there are obviously fees and other things other than, other than just the, you know, we get money from Bodfish, the main parking lot, we get a distribution from the town on that, and that's another issue, which I probably won't get into in too deep, much detail, but that, that parking lot is used extensively by Sandwich residents, actually probably more than Barnstable. But we get a, we get a fee from that, we also get fees from other, like, if you do bring a horse, we do charge a fee for that. Fires on the, on the main beach, you have to pay a fee. Other than that, the merchandise has been a big thing, Donna and her team have done amazing job. I mean, Sandine Neck is a brand, you know, and they've really taken advantage of that brand with their merchandise. And I think when I first joined the board, and I'm going to have this number wrong, I'm sure, maybe we're doing $6,000 or $7,000 a year in merchandise, I think they're well over $30,000 or $40,000 now. I mean, they're doing enough to buy a truck now, which is, you know, is real money.
Yeah.
So that's, that's mainly it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, Councilor Penn?
Thank you, President Tamish. Thank you for your report. I know another thing that you had, the Sandine Neck had to deal with was a contractor who could no longer provide the catering services, and it seemed like you came up with a pretty good solution on the, on the fly.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate that, that the, the new contractor will be back next year?
I, I don't know, it was really Nina, I mean, her, her team that had to, had to really respond to that, you know, more than the board, we did talk about it, but she, she did get a kind of a food truck solution temporarily, I don't know whether that's going to work out for next year or not, but I'd have to get back to you on that, I don't know. Hopefully. Anything else?
It's a wonderful asset, we're very glad that it's well managed and that the board is very engaged.
Yeah, the team is, out there is great, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on, for our report, is Lindsay Council, who chairs the Community Preservation Committee, which advises the Town Council on the expenditures of the CPC Fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris, Lindsay Council. I've been Chair of the Committee since it was originated. The Community Preservation Act was created by state legislation and was passed in 2000. The CPA was adopted by the Town of Barnstable in 2004 and replaced the Cape Cod Land Bank, which the town had adopted in 1996. There are just over 200 communities in the state that have adopted the Community Preservation Act. The Community Preservation Committee is comprised of nine members, five from designated town committees, and four at-large members. Steve Robichaud represents the Planning Board, Barbara DiBiase represents the Historic Commission, Deb Converse represents the Housing Authority, and Tom Lee represents the Conservation Commission. Currently, we have an open seat on the Recreation Commission. Terry Duanus, Catherine Garofoli, Farley Lewis, and myself are the four at-large members. The CPA has four program areas where funds can be spent, Historic Preservation, Community Housing, Open Space Preservation, and Recreation Facilities. Recreation was added as part of the Open Space Program in 2014. For the past five years, the Barnstable Affordable Housing Growth and Development Trust Board has managed requests for funding from community housing projects on behalf of the CPC. For Historic Preservation, building can be restored, historic records preserved, objects preserved, and structures can be acquired. For Community Housing, units can be constructed, refurbished, acquired, and rent can also be subsidized. For Open Space, land can be bought outright, or a perpetual preservation agreement known as a conservation restriction, a CR, can be purchased. For Recreation, land can be bought for facilities, town land can be constructed for playgrounds, ballfields, and parks can be refurbished. Structures, however, are very limited on recreation property. The Barnstable CPC meets every month, and Barnstable is only one of very few towns to have rolling submissions. The vast majorities of Massachusetts CPA communities accept project applications once or twice a year. The CPC uses a two-step process for reviewing funding requests, all might meetings to review projects or public hearings, and all requests follow the same procedure, whether from the town itself or from a private, non-profit applicant. The first step is a letter of intent, which is a brief description of the project and the funding that is being requested. From this, the CPC determines project eligibility under CPA guidelines. If the request qualifies, the CPC votes to move the project forward to a full project application. The application goes into the various details of the request, the timeline, phasing if any, project partners, the budget, matching funds or grants. From this, the committee may select a site visit, which may be warranted in order to fully understand the scope of the proposal. Appraisals, surveys, and project bids are obtained and reviewed as needed at this stage. If the project is approved by the committee, the request is forwarded to the Town Manager for scheduling at a Town Council public hearing. If the project is approved by the Town Council, funding is managed by the CPC Administrator and the Finance Department. The revenue for the CPC comes from two principal sources. One is our local surtax revenue, which is 3% surcharge on everyone's property tax, and there is also distributions from the State Community Preservation Trust Fund, which is set up by the legislature and gives a certain percentage of funds to the towns every year. Minimum distributions of 10% of collective funds are required to be set aside for each of the three program areas. The remaining funds are held in an undesignated fund, which can be expended for any of the three program areas. Funding is allowed for such administrative purposes as appraisals, surveys, and historic preservation evaluations, 10% of the overall budget. Our surcharge revenue currently runs approximately $4,500,000 per year, and from our state trust fund grant, we have averaged about $800,000. So that gives us operating capital of about $5,300,000 per year. The town has completed over 170 CPA projects since 2006. For Recreation, these include Luke's Love, Lombard Field West Barnstable, Hyannis Harborhawks Field, Centerville Playground, Cape Cod Rail Trail Phase 3 to Mary Dunn Road, Two Little League Fields, Hyannis Skate Park, and the Pickleball Courts in Marston's Mills. For Community Housing, we did Cromwell Court redevelopment, a rental subsidy program, Residence at 850, Forward 1, Lanell Landing, Veterans Home, Housing Assistance Program, Affordable Accessory Housing Program, Workforce Housing Program Phase 1 and 2, and Founder's Court redevelopment. For Open Space, we recently purchased Katuit High Grounds Golf, we put a CR on that property, land on Independence Drive, Hyannis, land on Sandine Neck, Pleasant Street, Hyannis, Harji Road in Centerville, Lowell Park in Katuit, Old Colony Road in Hyannis, and Prince Ave, Marston's Mills, as well as Craigville Beach Road, Centerville. For Historic Projects, this Town Hall and the School Administration Building exteriors were renovated, we recently funded the Hyannis Armory, there's currently a project going on at the Federated Church Cemetery in Hyannis to restore the headstones, the Zion Union Heritage Museum in Hyannis was acquired, Centerville Historical Society, U.S. Customs House, Barnstable Village, Ancient Town Reports, First Baptist Church, Hyannis, West Barnstable Railroad Station, Burgess House, Marston's Mills, Katuit-San Tuit Historic Society, and the Sturgis Library in Barnstable. There is currently a budget reserve of approximately $14 million in the CPA Fund. With that, we have on the, project list is possibly coming forward approximately $8 million in capital improvement program funding from the town. Those are projects that are in the future, haven't been brought forward like the one tonight, but they're in the queue. These include the JFK Memorial, Bay Lane Ball Field, Barnstable Recreation Field restroom, and Multi Field Court, and the Marston's Mills Hangar. Funds available for other projects that we estimate that are out there is approximately $6 million, and we have... These include the JFK Memorial, Bay Lane Ball Field, Barnstable Recreation Field restroom and multi-field court, and the Marston's Mills hangar. Funds available for other projects that we estimate that are out there is approximately $6 million. And, um, we have projects, possibilities there of Comacord Inn and Anthony's out there and Hyannis Playground, COMM Water Supply, the old Marston's Mills School. We're looking at a playground and possibly community housing and a possible playground at Hathaway's Pond. The total appropriations for 2006 through September 2025, historic preservation, we've funded about $17,500,000. For community housing, about $14,300,000. Open space, about $10,400,000. And for recreation, $6,500,000. For a total of $48,700. The interesting statistic that goes with that, though, is for our program, including capital improvement, uh, balances and outside fundraising through nonprofits, we've leveraged 72 million for a total program over the period of 120 million. So it's been a very successful program, and we've done a lot of work out there, and it's been quite enjoyable. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions on my right? Councilor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. Um, Lindsay, I know that you'll be stepping down, and you've made your succession plan. And I know I wasn't your liaison for long, but I enjoyed getting to understand the intricacies of what your team does. And I'm happy to see that you have a nice unit of people that are working towards the preservation of our community. And I know that when you step down, that you have a plan in place. And, and I think that succession is really important when we're thinking about, when we have somebody with such institutional knowledge, we need to make sure that we have someone in place behind you because you've done an amazing job. So the town thanks you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Schnup?
Thank you, President Tamish. I wanted to echo Councilor Turkelson's accolades. Lindsay, you have been a treasure to the town in your dedication and commitment from, starting from the land bank to CPC. You will be greatly missed, but I trust that your succession or your successor will be able to carry on. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's been my pleasure. It's been an exciting program. You know, we started even back before the land bank with hounding town meeting to buy property and causing trouble there. So it's been a bit of a road, but I think we have a good program. Moving forward, it's gonna be very interesting to see where things like these playgrounds we're very much interested in, we have a deficit of those in town, and the committee would like to get more of those scattered. We have a real need in Hyannis for some recreational facilities. And it'd be interesting to see what's out there for open space and what's left. So, thank you very much.
Comments on my left? Did you, did anyone have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay.
Okay, and our last presenter is Sam Wilson, who chairs the Barnstable, oh, no, Barnstable Municipal Water Supply. And he, uh, this committee is advisory to the town manager on the operations. So welcome, Sam, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you guys for having me come up and speak. It's not the first time. You may remember we were here as part of the water, first two water, uh, special meetings. So I'm not gonna, there's a lot of stuff I'm not gonna touch on because we already covered it in there, and we'll touch on some stuff we have not talked about in those prior meetings. But as we've overview, I am the chair of the Barnstable Municipal Water Supply Board. We oversee the Hyannis Water System, which delivers water to the villages of Hyannis, including Hyannis Port and West Hyannis Port and One Street in Centerville. Our board is made up of five members. Uh, there's myself and two other residential members. So it's me as the chair, Louise O'Neill, vice chair, and Timothy Stump. And then we also have two commercial ratepayers to represent those who use our water on the commercial end of it, and those are Patrick Ehart and Carlos Barbosa. And our job is to advise the town manager on the operations of the system and oversee Hans Kezier, who is our outstanding supervisor, or sorry, superintendent, excuse me, of the water system. But first, I, I wanna do something to celebrate for a second. On last week, we had groundbreaking of our new straightaway water treatment facility. So we had a number of people there, including Council President Tamash, who spoke, Council Vice President Clark, Councilor Lugkey, Mark Els, who also spoke, Dan Santos, and the DPW team, town staff, Viola, our project coordinators, and, so thank you to everyone who came to that, and also the, um, the two state reps as well. But really, I wanna talk about water quantity. We talked a lot about water quality in PFAS, but there's been a lot of information out there about, misinformation about water quantity. So I wanna talk about what we have in terms of water, water quantity today, tomorrow, and then the long run. So talking about water quantity and some of my, oh, here we go. Today, we, we have plenty of water in the ground. We actually have a great aquifer in terms of quantity. We have sand and gravel, which holds water really well. We have an aquifer that's 50 to 20, 200 feet thick. That's a lot of water that we can access. In terms of pumping needs, we pump on average about 900 million gallons per day, or sorry, per, per year out of our system. That's over 1,300 Olympic-sized swimming pools worth of water a year. At our highest, we're pumping about 4.7 million gallons per day. That's July, August. You'll see those numbers and, you know, people running the sprinkler systems. We have all of our residents plus all of our guests' summer residents here. By December, that drops. That's down to less than 2 million gallons per day. So we have a system that sees, gotta be built up to supply a big amount of demand in the summer. In terms of our pumping capacity, we do just over 5 million gallons per day in our current setup. So we have about a 300,000 gallon per day kind of buffer, although at peak demand, we are, we are, you know, at our system capacity for a short period of time. We're talking an hour or so. So I wanted to kind of help visualize what this pumping is. So we have two different charts here. On the right, you'll see a table, actually, and that's how much water in the last fiscal year we pumped every single month. And then that compared to the six to seven-year average we pumped. And not gonna go through it in detail, just note, you know, you look at July and August, those are our biggest months. We're pumping close to 120 million gallons, uh, per day. And that drops. And you see by December, November, into the winter, we're about 50,000 gallons per day. So less than half of our pumping that we do that. And then also, you'll see this chart with the blue line going up and down and a red average line. That is our, our change in pumping annual from the prior year as a percentage. If you can see in the side, we're talking hundreds of a percent here. So we're really pretty steady on our pumping. And when we do our budgeting, we basically assume we're not gonna pump more water because we make our money by selling water, pumping and selling it. So we're pretty much holding even. So what we're doing is we're enhancing pumping capacity today. So the first thing is, uh, we have the new Mary Dunn well 4. That is gonna come online at the end of the year. We've been working that for a little while. That's gonna add 500 gallons per minute, which works out to about 3/4 of a million gallons per day of new capacity up at our Mary Dunn well field. We also have mass-to-EP watering restrictions in the summertime. Obviously, it's our biggest demand time. Uh, when we're in a drought, our new water withdrawal permit requires us to put restrictions in place, especially those that, uh, target heavy water use like sprinkler systems, water washing cars and such, and such things like that. So that helps us in checking demand during our busiest time of the year. One thing I will note, though, is that when we pump less, we actually make less money. So water restrictions do have a somewhat of a negative impact on our bottom line. So what we, that's what we're doing today, but tomorrow, looking ahead, we are building new treatment plants. And our advanced treatment plants, like the existing one at, uh, the Maher facility and the one we're building at Straightway, those allow more efficient water treatment, which actually results in more water. And how this kind of magic happens is, we also, in addition to some of the pollutants like PFAS we have in our water, we have a lot of naturally occurring iron and manganese. Our PFAS filters do really good at cleaning out, activated carbon filters, really good at taking out the PFAS. They're also really good at taking out iron and manganese. The problem is the iron and manganese really quickly clogs up those filters. And then we have to exchange the medium, which is really expensive. We spend over a million dollars a year on medium exchanges alone. So when we build a new water treatment plant, the first step that the water takes is it actually goes to what's called a green sand filtration system. And in that, we use a really, really inefficient and inexpensive way to filter that iron and manganese out. And then we can send it to our activated carbon tanks to take the PFAS stuff out. So by doing that, we don't have to do as many carbon exchanges. And what we really have to do is we have to throttle pumps currently to make sure that we don't overwhelm those activated carbon tanks that don't have a green sand filtration system first. That's what we have up at Mary Dunn, or we don't have those greens sand at Mary Dunn, and we are building them at Straightway right now. So, and just to give you a sense, uh, we do, you know, a number of media exchanges for the activated carbon every year. We haven't done one media exchange yet on our green sand at Maher. We're gonna look at it this year to see how it's been doing. So, as you obviously see, a big difference in cost for our ratepayers. So, doing this, our new straightaway treatment plant, which is under construction, will bring our water pumping capacity up to almost 8 million gallons per day. It's about 50% increase from where we are today. And that plant is under construction and will deliver by summer 2027. And then we're gonna also build after that a Mary Dunn treatment plant somewhere at the end of the decade. And we expect the pumping capacity to jump up to, as you can see, over 10 million gallons per day. So we've, from today to the end of the decade-ish, we will have doubled our pumping capacity with an expectation still that we're probably gonna pump around the same, have demand of water. So we'll have a lot more resiliency in our system and a lot more capacity. And then the long run, we have a new well exploration program, and this is a decade plus horizon. And this adds one thing that all of our new pumping stations can't do, which is it adds redundancy and resiliency to our system. Going to somewhere new means that if we were to have a, a emerging contaminant in the future impact a well field, we're able to take that offline, go to the new well field that we have in a decade or so, and then manage how to bring that, that contaminated well field back online cleanly and properly. So we're looking at a number of different locations within the town on town property, but they're probably gonna be outside our service area. We don't really have anywhere left to go. And we already have wells outside our service area, and our big tanks are up in Barnstable Village. So that is our long-term plan there. So, you know, in conclusion, we're working to provide plenty of water today, tomorrow, and in the future. And we always strive to deliver the best quality water possible, also the most affordable rates possible. All these treatment plants, they cost big money. It's 45-plus million for the straightaway plant. So we understand that our ratepayers pay for that. We don't get money from the general fund. We get some, some special funds. We get some rebates sometimes from lawsuit settlements, but those are borne by our ratepayers. So we try to be careful that we're not killing them in the process of trying to provide them clean water with their finances. So, any questions?
Thank you. I think you guys have done a fantastic job turning that system around, and you'd be commended for that.
Thank you. It's been a lot of Hans, and it's been also all the, the chairs of the board before my time who were all there, especially, I'd say, Stephen O'Neill, who, you know, was here when this PFAS problem hit us and had to scramble in a way that was absolutely outstanding in the end of what we got done.
Okay. Any questions on my left? Councilor Neary?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you for the presentation. It is, uh, it's a wonderful thing to see, uh, the, the growth and the improvement in our water supply, especially in the, in Hyannis. Hyannis, uh, obviously had a history, histories had to, had to get rid of. And, uh, we can be very proud of, I mean, we're frankly, uh, like a world-class water, water, uh, delivery system. I'm also very happy to hear, although I don't know how you're gonna pull it off on the 10-year plan, uh, some years ago, I had the conversation about maybe having a meeting of the minds of how you're going to get to really, uh, the most favorable locations on the Cape, you know, the top of the spine of, of Route 6, uh, and then figure out a way to, to manage to, uh, share, whether it be, you know, the different comm, the different fire departments and water supply sources throughout the town. So I'll be looking forward to seeing how that all flushes out. Uh, I, I, my, my dream was to, we had a study done, uh, DPW did it, Dan, Director Santos, obviously presented it, and Hans in the past, about really the prime areas on, in our town. And, uh, the big picture of things is not only the town of Barnstable, but I think the whole Cape really needs to look at our water supply and our sourcing, uh, and come to, come in some form of a agreement to how do we, how do we, uh, bring all the ratepayers on, online to minimize cost and, and really, you know, continue what, what is occurring in, in the, uh, in the, really the, the town of, the village of Hyannis and, and our Barnstable Water System. You should be really proud of, of what's going on there. I see it firsthand, so thank you very much. And, and again, I'll be, I'll be watching from the stands to see how it unfolds. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone on my right? Councilor Schnup?
Thank you, President Tamish. And again, your, your presentations are always very informative and concise. Obviously, when the issues of water quality came up, you know, decade and a half ago, and you, the Hyannis Water Supply was dependent on other sources of water, uh, it now seems like perhaps you might be on the other side of the equation. Has there ever been any conversations with the other water districts of sort of being a reserve for them? Yeah, I know there's been some public concerns about the extent of the housing that's being built in the Barnstable District and whether that is gonna stress their water supply. So I just didn't know if there were any discussions about sharing some of, if you do have some redundancy.
There's, there's been a little bit. At the moment, we do have interconnects with Yarmouth Water and Comm Water. I know Yarmouth Water is a one-way, so we can get water from them, but they can't get water yet from us. So I think it's more of a departmental level, and then also council just figured out, do we wanna have these systems work together and put together interconnects so that the valves can get opened? And if Comm Water or Barnstable Fire District Water or Yarmouth needs water from us, that we have the capacity and we can send it to them? Because it would actually require some pipes getting put together at the moment to even get there.
Councilor Lugkey?
Yeah, thank you, Sam. I'll echo what everybody else said. Beautiful presentation. I have a couple of questions. One, the flow neutral, we adopted flow neutral, and from what I understand, you know, the sewage or charges are based on the intake of water. How, how involved were you in flow neutral? And does that do anything to your capacity?
So I was not at all involved with flow neutral. What I do know about water versus sewer is, yes, sewer bills are based on water meters, but you can get a takeoff meter for your irrigation system. So there is water that might be coming out of our system that's going onto people's lawns that would not be going back into the system. I don't know if that would be counted as part of flow neutral. Do you, Hans, do you know more precisely?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I just didn't know if flow neutral has any, um, capacity of limitations for you as you're looking forward?
No, I mean, the, the key with our system, this is what kind of blows my mind when I think about this, is we build a water system to provide drinking-level quality water at firefighting capacity. So really, at the end of the day, when we think about how much we can pump, we wanna think about the worst-case scenario of a fire going on in a town that needs to get put out. So in normal operations, we are usually in very, very good shape in terms of capacity and, and pumping. And I'll share a story. Last, uh, the beginning of the summer, we had our almost Widowmaker moment. We had a, an eight-inch main ironically up at the Fire Training Academy, our favorite place in the system, uh, break on a Monday morning, right, when people's sprinkler systems are running, right, when people are jumping in the shower to get off to go to work or their day of vacation. And we stressed our system in a way that it had never been stressed before. We had every DPW employee, everybody from the town out looking for this thing, and they found it. And we lost a bunch of water out of our tower, went down below a level we've never had before. We lost some pressure, but we didn't get anywhere close to having to go to a boil water order. We got the thing fixed, we got the valve shut, and the system recovered, and it, it was very resilient. So, I know that doesn't quite answer your question on flow neutral, um, but we can also look into that.
No, that's okay. And the second question is, how frequently do you evaluate those other payments you mentioned? The payments from the, I'll call them the polluters. You know, the ratepayers do a certain thing, but I know you get payments. How do you go about evaluating those? And what's the timeframe for those? Are those going out into infinity or every five years? You look at those rates and, and see?
As I understand, and I think Hans might be able to chime in, there's lawsuits that happen. There's attorneys that decide to sue 3M, DuPont, and other companies. There's a settlement, then there becomes a process to become a beneficiary of the settlement, basically. And then our office team and Hans work to provide that, hey, we spent this much money on it. They take all that information. We basically get a credit per dollar spent. That credit turns into, as I understand, a dollar, the amount of a dollar that comes back to us. And then there'll be a schedule for how those get paid out. So there's a finite dollar at the end that we will get. finite dollar at the end that we will get minus attorney fees, and those will be broken either one payment or a few payments over a few years, depending on the settlement terms. But I'm not an attorney, and I'm not involved at that, so.
No, just one more. That, that might be from the manufacturer's settlements. What about from the airport and the county?
You want to, the, I know that we have agreements in place. I just don't know them as well as Hans does.
Hans Kaiser, Supervisor, Water Supply Division. The settlement with, or a payment from the airport was already processed. That's available to us, and Town Council voted for that, I think it was last year or the year before. The county settlement has a three-level payment schedule, and I think, but Mark Milne would know better than I do, you know, it's over quite a few years. Part of it is they pay principal interest on a bond that helped us pay for the PFAS treatment up at Mary Dunn. Part of it is reimbursement of carbon exchanges for the filter systems at that location. And part of it is the O and M expenses. That's a yearly payment based on labor and materials for the work, the operational work we need to do at the Mary Dunn Filters.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. The slide where you mentioned the, during a drought, when there's kind of restrictions on use, how are you going about figuring that out?
So, that's based on our DEP water withdrawal permit. So, the state has to give us a license to actually take the water out of the ground and make sure we treat it properly, et cetera, and distribute it cleanly. We have to go think, but every 10 years we do that? We just went through it, I know that. Every 20 years, we have to get a new permit from them. And as an update to our permit, and our new permit, we went from a, we should go into a water conservation when we're in a drought, as the state determines that, to a, we shall go into a water conservation. So, what happens is, is we at our, one of our board meetings, usually towards the beginning of the summer, if we are in a drought and we're expected to go into that, it becomes an agenda item on our agenda as a board, and we vote in those water restrictions based on the drought level we were in. As that changes through the, the summer period, we will adjust that if needed based on the drought level. Either it gets drier or we get rain and it becomes less.
So, the guidance is basically, if I'm living in the area that, that you're supplying, you're asking me not to water my lawn on certain days, or?
Well, officially, we're actually more telling you not to water your lawn or not to, like, wash your car outside.
Okay, but is there an actual mechanism where you are monitoring that or, or enforcing that? Or, I mean, it sounds kind of wishy-washy.
At the moment, we have it set up as a, you know, if someone reports to us that somebody is watering their lawns when they shouldn't be, we will then call them and say, hey, you can't be doing this. We also have a mechanism with our meter reads to go out and then confirm that they are no longer doing that. We can see, close to instantaneously, anytime of the day, of how much water is being used at a property.
Okay.
So, it's a, you know, we, we're not going out as an active enforcement mechanism, but when someone comes and asks us about that, or brings someone to our attention, we have the mechanisms and the tanks and technology in place to, to monitor.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Schnep?
Thank you. I just had a follow-up question. I noticed in the chart that showed the water usage, that it appeared that the usage this year, that this summer, was higher than the average usage. And I was a little surprised, given that we did have drought conditions.
Because when there is drought conditions, we tend to see more water being used traditionally. You know, this is our first summer of having enforced water restrictions in place, so it might take some time for people to understand.
So, because people need to water because they're not getting rain, and so, yeah.
And there's still exemptions for, like, ornamental gardens, food gardens, that type of stuff. It's not an absolute do not water anything period. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Any further comment or announcements? We are going to recognize our retiring counselors. I don't know if you had heard from Counselor Mendez. Okay. We're, we're going to do that at the end of the meeting. Try to get through the orders first. I, I was just afraid some of the counselors would grab their plaque and be out the door. Just kidding, just kidding. But Counselor Levesque, if you could start the orders of the day, please, at 2026-042.
Thank you, President Tamish. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority vote for the full council. It's item number 2026-042. Appropriation order in the amount of $300,000 for the installation of rectangular rapid-flashing beacons, RRFBs, and the construction of associated curb ramps, and authorization to accept the fiscal year 2026 equipment grant in the amount of $300,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Transportation for 14 RRFBs as written.
Thank you. This requires a public hearing. With respect to the public hearings, I'm going to announce the opening and closing of each public hearing without asking for a vote to do so. However, if any counselor objects at any time, then a vote will be taken to open and close the public hearing. If there is no objection at this point, I will open the public hearing, and I would recognize Mr. Santos, Director of the DPW.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Town Council. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. And this appropriation request is for $300,000, and it is to supplement a $300,000 grant that we received from the Department of Transportation. We sought and received for the installation of rapid-flashing beacons at crosswalk locations and the 14 locations. And these are the 14 locations throughout the town. We started this process with about 65 locations, and we whittled them down into the most important based on a number of criteria, including whether schools were nearby, speed limits, site distances, and things like that. And we got it down to these 14 priority locations, submitted that through the Cape Cod Commission, as well as DOT. They did an additional review and concurred with these locations and awarded us the grant. The cost of the town for the installation is, as I mentioned, estimated to be approximately $300,000. Funding will be provided from the general fund reserves, which were certified as of July 1st at $36.2 million. The impact to the Public Works operating budget is minimal and can be absorbed within the department's current operating budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this item? Mr. Moran?
I'm Larry Moore again. I looked at that, and I thought it made reference to the state. What's the source of getting this, these grants done? Because earlier tonight, Heather made the issue about flashing lights, and even Betty brought it up about lights in Hyannisport. But isn't there a way that the public should be able to raise these issues and be able to apply for them? Now, does it, or is it tied to a specific department? I think that's something that needs to be disclosed, and, and if it's not done, then we need to figure out ways to get that done. It should be something the public should be able to say, we've got a problem here. It's being ignored. Let's get it done. That's, I think that should be something that you consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this item? Lynn, is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing no one on Zoom. Excuse me. I will close the public hearing and open to council discussion. Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. So, Director Santos, the total cost soup to nuts to install these 14 beacons is $300,000?
$600,000.
So, we're paying $300, and the state's paying $300,000?
Yes.
As I say, $300,000 didn't seem like enough money. That makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Sure. Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, President Tamish. Thank you, Dan. Do I understand that these will be new stop signs in these locations, that we currently have no stop signs?
They're not stop signs. These are at crosswalks.
Okay.
And these will be the beacons that pedestrians can push the button and they flash. If you're familiar with the one right outside here?
Absolutely.
And we have them at a number of locations in town, and they're popular, and I think they're extremely well-received and very safe. So, we're delighted to be able to get this grant for this.
And do these locations currently have striped painting on the street? So, this just adds another feature to the, great, right? And I just wanted to make a quick comment to, for Mr. Moran. In Marson's Mills, we did have a couple of residents concerned about an intersection at Newtown and Asa Meggs, worked with the town, and we now have a four-way stop with all the flashing lights and indicators, and I think it's been very successful. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? Seeing none? Okay. Madam Cork, go for a vote, please.
Counselors, Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Gordon Starr, sorry.
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
That is 12 yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion does pass.
Thank you.
Counselor Neary, if you could do 2026-046, please.
My pleasure, President Tamish. This is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call, majority vote. It's item number 2026-046. It's amending the Code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinance, Chapter 48, for the Stretch Energy Code to change the effective date as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. At this point, I would recognize Mr. Counsel.
Thank you very much, Council President Tamish. At the September 26th, 2025 Community Preservation Committee meeting, the six members present voted unanimously to recommend to the Town Council, through the Town Manager, the Barnstable Land Trust application for $307,500 in open space and recreation community preservation funds to reserve under a conservation restriction to be held by the town, an ecologically important retired cranberry bog property. This property consists of 25.74 plus or minus acres within the Great Marsh and Barnstable Harbor watershed. It is located at 301 Parker Road in West Barnstable, and is shown as a Cessars Map 176, parcel 019. BLT's total purchase price of the property is $615,000, with the town providing $307,500. With us is Janet Milkman from the Land Trust to go over the project.
Good evening, Janet Milkman, Barnstable Land Trust. We have a couple of slides to show you. This is a wonderful project. I'm sure you've also all learned about the cranberry restoration projects that are going on, on Cape and off Cape. And we're delighted to be able to acquire this property with the help of the town holding a conservation restriction. It's really wonderfully located, connecting the Bridge Creek Conservation Area to Spruce Pond. Both town-owned properties, providing a corridor there, a conservation corridor, also with the opportunity to connect the walking paths. The Cape Cod Pathways, in fact, which goes 11 miles across the entire town, so now you will be able to access that path from this property with, with a new connection. It has, the property has a vernal pool on it, which is the location of rare species, and we are really grateful for the support of the Community Preservation Committee for this property, and happy to answer any questions. Yeah, here's just a beautiful picture. It is, it will be immediately open for public access, for walking, and we will also start, once we own it, we will be doing some studies to analyze what the best restoration opportunities are. It does flow into Bridge Creek Conservation Area and then into Barnstable Harbor. So, Barnstable Harbor is, and that area is an area of critical environmental concern. So, anything we can do to improve the water flowing north there will be really helpful, and we'll start studying that right away.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this item? Seeing no one. Is there anyone online? As I mentioned earlier, a letter was received from the West Barnstable Civic Association in support of this project. So, I will close the public hearing. Council discussion. Anyone on my left? On my right? Seeing none. Madam Cork, can we have a vote, please?
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
That is 12 yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion does pass.
Thank you.
Counselor Neary, if you could do 2026-046, please.
My pleasure, President Tamish. This is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call, majority vote. It's item number 2026-046. It's amending the Code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinance, Chapter 48, for the Stretch Energy Code to change the effective date as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. At this point, if there's no objection, I will open a public hearing, and I will recognize, who for the, Chanel? Gordon, are you, who's Attorney No? Gordon, are you presenting?
No, go ahead. I wasn't really, let me, I wasn't right here.
I wasn't sure who was actually doing this, so.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, counselors. Karen Nobert, Town Attorney. At the Town Council meeting on October 9th, the Town Council voted to adopt the Stretch Energy Code effective January 1st, 2026. This amendment would change the effective date to July 1st, 2026. Extending the effective date would enable the Town Manager to consider staffing needs and submit any needed funding requests to the Town Council. In addition, contractors will need time to adjust to the new Stretch Energy Code and get up to speed on code requirements, process, and documentation. A delayed start date would be beneficial to those contractors, some of whom have voiced concerns about a January effective date. This, just to reiterate what President Tamish said, this is really a technical correction. It's not a reopening of the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this matter?
Jake Dewey, resident of Hyannis. I just wanted to reiterate what Attorney Nobert said. You know, this, this effective date, I still think July is too soon for some of us that have drawn plans, made commitments to things. With building code changes, we usually get a one-year, you know, heads-up. So, I would ask that we amend it further to January 1, 2027. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to be heard on this matter? Seeing no one. Is there anyone online? Seeing no one. We'll go to, I will close the public hearing at this point and go to council discussion. Is there any discussion on this matter? Is there any discussion on this matter? My left? Seeing none? On my right? Council Ludke?
In reading this justification, I think what Mr. Dewey has proposed is very reasonable. I think there's going to be a lot of, a significant learning curve. There's probably going to be the hiring of personnel. I think July is too ambitious. I think it would be much more reasonable. We heard from Matt Tag earlier, this is a dramatic shift from what we've done here in Barnstable, very dramatic on both sides, for the town and for the builders and for the residents. And I think it would be much more reasonable to do a January 1, 2027 start date. I think we'd all be more comfortable, we'd be better prepared, and we'd be able to enact this in a much more professional and rational way. So I'd like to propose that we further amend this to the January 1, 2027 date.
Okay, motion made. Motion made and seconded. To amend the motion to have an effective date of January 1 of 2027. Any discussion on the motion? Council Schnep?
I don't know if Council Star or anybody on staff can speak to whether that has any implications for a Green Communities application.
Council Star, would you like to address that question?
I mean, it would delay for six months our ability to apply for Green Communities. My concern is, I don't agree with some of the statements in the rationale that we need more staff members to make this happen. I don't think we need any more staff members. I think it's going to make it easier for the building inspector to do his job. They need a little training to get going. What we were really concerned with were people like Mr. Dewey who are planning projects, but we've already given them eight months. You know, we've got October, November, December, all the way till June, the end of June. So that's, and they need that, and that's important to have that lead time. But I don't think the building department needs any more staff. And the training is done by the state. They've already set up times to come down and train the staff. So I think they've got it under control. Thank you.
Attorney Nobur?
Thank you, President Tamish. I just wanted to add, I don't want to speak for the building inspector, but much of the rationale came from him. So just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and if I could just comment on some of my discussions with Town Manager Els and Director Florence, he feels there's going to be a significant increased workload because of the number of inspections and type of inspections that have to be done.
And I completely disagree.
Okay.
That the Herz raiders will be doing the inspections. It'll be fewer inspections for the building department.
Okay. Any further, Council?
Thank you, President. And thank you, Council Star, for bringing this forward, and the rest of the councillors. The great thing about this particular forum of town government is if there is a, an opposition to these things, they can certainly be brought up again and discussed again with, you know, majority vote. So it's a postponement of six months, seven months, eight months. Seems to me this time, if the, if there might be a new decision or a new thought process behind this council, and the council can act or not act. But, you know, with due respect to Jake and the builders, I voted against this item, but, you know, eight months out, you've all got time now, so where it goes would be my opinion where it ends up going. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All right. We have a roll call vote, please. This is on the amendment to change the effective date to July 1, 2027.
January.
Excuse me, January. Thank you. January 1. Shoot for July. January 1, 2027.
Councillors, Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Neary.
No.
Penn.
No.
Schnep.
No.
Starr.
No.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
No.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Okay, let me count. Seven yes, five no.
Okay. The amendment does pass, which would change the motion to have an effective date of January 1, 2027. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, Madam Cork? We're voting on the motion as amended.
Councillors, Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
12 yes.
The motion as amended does pass. Thank you. Councilor Crowe, 2026-047, please.
Thank you, Chairman Tamish. This is an item of old business. It's item number 2026-047, may be acted upon by a majority vote. Order authorizing the grant of an easement to the Wiano Club for private sewer lines and the grant of an easement to N-Star Electric Company for related electric service within certain town public ways in Osterville.
Second.
Okay. Tom, I recognize.
Good evening, Councillors. Tom LaRosa, First Assistant Town Attorney. The Wiano Club in Osterville contacted the Department of Public Works and the Town Attorney's Office regarding their need to upgrade their wastewater disposal systems. The Wiano Club informed the town that pursuant to an administrative consent order with the State Department of Environmental Protection, they must discontinue their existing septic systems and construct wastewater treatment and disposal facilities serving all club properties exclusive of the golf course properties. The club's various parcels that would be soured are separated from the property in which they plan to build their new wastewater treatment plant by several intervening public ways, Webster Street, Seaview Avenue, and Washington Avenue. With that, the club seeks rights to install sewer lines laterally across these roadways to reach the proposed treatment facility in order to comply with DEP's requirements. The town has worked with the Wiano Club to minimize their proposed use of town public ways. Under the authority of this vote, the town would issue an easement to the club to allow the sub-surface sewer lines for four street crossings. The vote would also authorize the town to grant an easement to N-Star Electric Company for an underground electric line to serve the club's new wastewater treatment plant. Due to the requirements of MAST DEP and the environmental benefits that would achieve, be achieved through upgrading from various sewer septic systems, from various septic systems to a wastewater treatment facility, the town proposes to authorize the easement for nominal monetary consideration. The club's properties are not identified in the town's state-approved comprehensive wastewater management plan as scheduled to receive town sewer. As such, the above-referenced upgrades will be the Wiano Club's long-term wastewater solution. The vote would authorize the Town Manager to finalize the easement, and the vote would also require the Wiano Club to indemnify the town for any injury or loss in connection with their use and occupation under the easement, as well as to secure a standard trench permit from the DPW prior to occupying or opening the public way. The memorandum attached to the vote from the club's consultant, Sand Tech Consulting Services, provides further background on this request, and a representative of the Wiano Club is here to answer any questions on the project.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address this? Sorry, would you like to?
Kevin Klein from Sand Tech, here on behalf of the Wiano Club to answer any questions you may have about this.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to be heard on the matter? Is anyone online? I'm sorry, it's not a public hearing. Okay, strictly majority vote. All right. Council discussion.
Thank you, President Tamish. This might be a question for our DPW director, but with the addition of a wastewater treatment in Wiano, does that change the equation on our nitrogen loading? Do we get some positive benefit that they're removing nitrogen? Or are you not removing?
We are. The treatment plant is, complies with the groundwater discharge permit standards, does remove nitrogen. It's not in one of your nitrogen-sensitive embainments. It's one of the few areas outside of it. Therefore, it wasn't included in your comprehensive plans. We were never going to get sewer here, but it doesn't actually help you with your nitrogen loading to any of your embainments.
Thank you. Council Ludke?
Yeah, I find this fascinating and wonderful. I mean, this is incredible that you're doing this. I mean, I guess you're being forced to do it, so that's why you're doing it.
They are being forced to do it. When the DEP first came to us, we looked at it and said, but the Wiano Club's separated by streets. How do you aggregate all of the flow? And they said, well, we're still going to consider it one facility, even though you're separated by public ways. So in order to actually combine all the sewage, treat it in one location, and discharge it in the best location, we have to cross the public ways.
But are you going to be big enough to handle any of your neighbors who might want to chip in and participate in this? I mean, how large is this facility going to be? Because you have a lot of buildings there. You're going to attach all of these? And where is the treatment facility? You've got a pond kind of across from there. Where are you dis, I mean, as I say, I'd just like a quick rundown.
I'll give you a quick rundown. The treatment plant is designed for 46,000 gallons a day. We collect from the Wiano Club house and the buildings that are on the south side of Seaview Avenue. They then have, if you go north of Seaview Avenue, between Seaview and Washington, they have employee housing and some other members' residences or housing for them. And then to the north side of Washington is the tennis facility. All of those are going to be collected, brought to a treatment plant that's being built north of Washington on the eastern end of the property. And then we bring the treated effluent back, and it's actually discharged between Washington and Seaview. And it's in a location that doesn't impact Crystal Lake and provides the maximum setback to the ocean. But it's, we've already done hydrogeologic studies with the DEP to basically show there's no adverse environmental impact from the location. And this gets, takes away all of the existing septic systems that are out there right now.
Yeah, and what degree? We've talked about in Barnstable here, upgrading our effluent to drinking water standards. What are you, are you going to jump ahead and, you know, and do that? Or, I mean, do you need now a permit and all this stuff? Your own permit from the state?
It's a groundwater discharge permit from the MAST DEP. They require effluent standards of 30 milligrams per liter BOD and TSS, less than 10 milligrams per liter total nitrogen. The plant, we've added some, it should easily achieve that and get us some better than that. But that's the discharge standards for groundwater discharge.
Are those the exact standards that the Town of Barnstable is being held to?
I'm not sure what your standards are, but probably.
And your last question, you're discharging underground?
Yes, it goes subsurface leaching.
How far down?
The leaching chambers are about one to three feet below grade. And we still have about eight feet to groundwater where we're locating it.
Okay. And do you have excess capacity?
There's a little bit of excess, but not a lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Neary?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, President Tamish. Just a quick question. Is this property eventually on the CWMP plan for future?
No, it is not.
All right, thank you.
We asked, we were, they were really hoping that they could be added to it, as opposed to building a wastewater treatment plant that's going to cost in excess of $4.5 million and in excess of $200,000 a year to operate.
My reference was my concern over, you've got, now you've got stuff on the road and if anything was going by.
All we're doing with the road, we're crossing the road. It's just a sewer line crossing it in four locations and three-phase power for the treatment plant crossing in one location.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a majority vote. Madam Cork?
Councillors, Ludke.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Motion does pass.
Thank you, Councillors.
2026-048. Vice President Clark, if you could read that in.
Thank you, President Tamish. This is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Agenda item 2026-048, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $704,155 for the Osterville Playground Project located at 93 West Bay Road in Osterville.
Motion made and seconded. This is a public hearing, so at this point, I will open the public hearing, and I recognize Lindsey Council for the rationale.
Thank you, Council President Tamish. At the September 15th, 2025 Community Preservation Committee meeting, the six committee members present voted unanimously to recommend to the Town Council through the Town Manager, the Department of Public Works application for $400,000 in open space recreation community preservation funds to cover the full projected cost of the Osterville Playground Project. At initial, at its April 27, 2023 meeting, under item number 2023-147, the council appropriated $1,362,962 in initial funding for the new Osterville Playground, with $904,072 provided from the amount set aside for open space and recreation within the Community Preservation Fund, and $95,683 provided from the undesignated funds within the Community Preservation Funds, and $363,207 from the general fund. With us tonight is Richard Ventrone, Senior Architect, to go over the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Council. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Council Members, again, I'm Richard Ventrone, the Senior Architect with the town. Mark is aware he would have been here tonight to make the presentation. I don't want to repeat what Chairman Council just said, but there are the statistics up there with you. But what I'm here tonight for is to ask for an additional $400,000 for the project. And in this funding request, it also includes the transfer of the remaining funding we have from two prior projects that I will cover here, in the amount of $304,155. So a total tonight is being requested of $704,155. Before I do that, though, just to explain the project a bit, we started, we were approved again in '23, and we've been working diligently over the past two years with an advisory group. And Council Crowe has been really instrumental in helping us with this process. As you see, there are a great many people there, all of whom had differing opinions and strong opinions and cared deeply about this playground. It's been a long time coming. It's been in people's minds for a decade. So a lot of hope and ideas were in many people's minds. And forming that into a cohesive whole and into an actual project is challenging and difficult and exciting. And thank the chairman, I should say chairman, but Council Crowe was very helpful in herding us cats and getting us, getting us on the same page and moving it forward. So again, the funding breakdown, previously appropriated, there you see the $1,362,962 and the additional funding request for 400, that was approved by the CPC in September, $400,000. And then transfer of fundings that we have, funding that we have from prior projects that are now finished or not moving forward. One of them is the Osterville Ball Field. There was $11,987 remaining. And funding for the Osterville Recreation Center, which didn't move forward, of $292,168, totaling $704,155. $292,168 totaling $704,155. The total cost of the project will be $267,117. So why? Why this increased funding? Why is this, why we want money? Well, very simply, the playground is twice more now than twice the size of what it was going to be before. And when you start any project like this, you have a vague idea of what you want it to be. But ultimately, the program and how it's really fleshed out has to be decided by the end users, which is the committee represented, the advisory group represented, and we as well, as the designers of it. And also in consultation with a playground consultant, because this is actually a very technical thing, these playgrounds and how this equipment works, the size limitations, requirements, how to get the best play value out of the equipment. All of that plays in. And by the end of the day, we came to this design as being the, the design. The project increases in size again by twice. So overall, the project includes many factors. There's regrading of it, there's a new playground, there's the port-in-place surfacing. We were all very familiar with all playgrounds that had wood chips and that type of thing. But it's really not a good surface. We all survived it. But now we try to provide actually a cushion for anyone playing on this equipment. There is a bottle filling station. There's expanded parking lot, which is part of this project now, new sidewalks, there's walkway lighting, a stormwater infiltration system. There's a new screen enclosure for a porta potty pending the bathhouse building that hopefully at some point we'll get, the comfort station, fencing, and a retaining wall. It's not a huge retaining wall, but it's a retaining wall nonetheless, which is, I'll show you in some of the later slides. But it's between, as you look at this image, between the pickleball or tennis courts and the playground. So here it is overall, this, this playground from the, an aerial view looking straight down of it, showing you the design that was selected of two that we had for the port-in-place. This is like a rubber material that's trowelled on in various shapes and colors. I've removed from this image, kind of in the middle, there's a large shade structure that you'll see in other perspectives, simply for clarity, so you can see the equipment. But as you can see, this includes swings. On the left, there's a two-to-five age group playground area, and on the right, a five-to-eight age group playground area. There are sitting areas. You see the two square-ish umbrellas that are covering an area with picnic tables. And then there are swings, and you see those triangular forms. And I'll speak to those in a moment as to why they look quite like that. Here's another view of it. You can see the parking lot. There's actually a bottle filling station. If you look above, at the very bottom of the slide, it says Public Works. Above the W, you see a little columnar thing. There will be two access points into the playground, but one of them will be locked and mostly used for maintenance. That's to have a control point, so parents can see people coming in and out and know that there's really only one, one way to get in. There's a four-foot fence, but obviously someone scaling a fence would be very obvious. The two-to-five-year-old area, as you see here, has two chief components to it. There is an igloo kind of structure, which allows people to go in and hide and have those, have those experiences. We chose to make it, again, reflecting our coastal, an area, a kind of islands with water. There's a shallow area, a darker area, which is why you see the darker blue and the lighter blue. And then there's a shanty-type structure with windsocks and that type of thing. One of the things that Councilor Crowe wanted, which I'm very happy because we wanted it as well, is the idea of having a shark or something kind of fun but not threatening. As you see there in the port-in-place, there's a bit of a shark silhouette in it. And even there's a balance beam. So there's a lot of play in the structures themselves and also within the port-in-place, a sense of, can you not get in the water? Can you balance? Or can you not fall in? Those types of things. And as you see, there's a bench. So always a line and a mindset towards making sure parents have a clear view of their children and can sit and relax and enjoy them play. On the six-to-12, I said five-to-ten, but six-to-12, it's much more complicated. There's this net climber, there are slides, there are tandem slides. Within these structures is so much play. Monkey bars are crawled to, a balance beam. A lot of these things that you walk on, those little flying saucer-shaped things you see at the bottom, those are attached to rope, so that they move, they, they can throw you off balance. All of these things, a lot of play value in this. There are also musical instruments components into, in this project. And you actually see one of them here on the very bottom. It looks kind of like mushrooms. Those are actually bells that can be played. Here, this big central feature, it's very hard to show how much is in there. There are suspended bridges, there are things to crawl through, there are slides, there are climbing components. You can see here, there's almost a figure eight on its side shape that's kind of an olive green. That's on springs, so that wobbles. Again, it's a great deal of play, much more play value in this equipment than any of us knew as children. And also, these are modular pieces. So the companies that make these, these are highly tested, these go through a great deal of quality control, and they're modular. So as things get damaged or fail over time or need replacement, they can be swapped out for other components and be repaired. Here's a view of what's called a we-go-round, the more modern version of that, of that carousel thing we all had where we could torment our friends by making it spin very fast. There's a governor on this, so that doesn't happen. But we've introduced, again, our sailing, you missed that, as Mark always likes to say, seesaws are a good way to know that you can't trust anyone when I sit down and prevent you from getting down, getting down from up there. But we have a compass rose component that we've introduced into this, which is in fact facing north. You see also more musical instruments that are scattered throughout this. So on the, I'll say, rocks that go across the water, you'll see what looks like cattails. That's actually a musical instrument. And then by those two children down below, what look like flowers pointing down, those are musical instruments. There's also signage, all of this equipment has signage on it provided by the manufacturer that recommends the age group for those playing with it. Here is the entrance to it from the parking lot. You can see that bottle filling station here. And you might ask, as people have done, well, if there's a two-to-five and a six-to-12, how do you prevent a two-to-five-year-old from playing with a six-to-12-year-old group? What our consultant has told us, and the manufacturers as well, is that children are rather smart and self-limiting. So they might try something if they want to, but if you leave them to their own devices, they'll back off. If it's a little too frightening for them, the problem comes when parents lift children up to things and make them hang on things, and obviously with the best intent. But they will tend to migrate towards the equipment that makes them feel the most comfortable and then grow into the older equipment. And that is all I have for you, aside from any questions you might have.
Fantastic. Looks great.
Thank you.
It really does. How many years, John?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years and coming, but hopefully worth the wait. Any questions on my right? Councilor Neary?
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you, President Tamish. Will children from other villages be allowed to come here with, pay a fee, something like that, to go into this particular structure?
Play directly to me. No, I'm glad you asked that question. I'm glad you asked it. Thank you for asking that question. One of the, one of the really admirable and, and loudly spoken requirements of the advisor group was that this be a playground for everyone. They wanted to welcome people from outside of the village, that everyone would be welcome to come here. They wanted to make a place that would be welcoming. And of course, anyone, anyone can come and play.
Even Katuut. Any further, further discussion? Councilor Schnep?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Could somebody explain how we jumped from 1.3 to 2 million? And, you know, when we're presented at the council, the 1.3 was a pretty big price tag in 2023. And the assumption, at least for me on the dais, is that that's a pretty good estimate of the full cost of the project. And this kind of raises some concerns that I have. You know, just a couple of weeks ago, we approved $800,000 plus for some work in Katuut, which I believe is a very valid project. But what's to say that, you know, two years from now, we're going to get back another, you know, $800,000? You know, let's, let's add a little bit more because we didn't know what we were wanting. So could you explain how we, you know, that, didn't we have the community input on the front end to what was supposed to be in this playground?
No, not to the degree that we got into the program. No, obviously, we knew there was a desire. People have images of things. But no, we, before it became a funded project for us, our involvement was somewhat limited. So as you get into it and you go through it and say, we need this piece or that piece, and trust me, there were many things that didn't come in or that we chose to, to, to not use in favor of something else. So it wasn't simply, let's throw everything in we want. There was, it's absolutely a balanced project process of going through it. But it became twice as large when we, we got to a place where we thought we had the amount of play equipment that was needed. In terms of us coming back for more, we're, we're nearing the end of construction documents with this project. This, this will be going out to bid. So, so no, that, the design process is over. And in fact, some things, like the musical instruments, we're still questioning whether we want all of that or maybe limit it to one side of the playground. So if anything, I think we might remove a little program. We haven't quite decided. That's easily done. You know, we can have it in and then remove it. But, but it wasn't for just the idea of, oh, let's, let's keep adding to it. It was absolutely a honed process of, there were things we liked that were just too much money and we'd have to sacrifice something else for it. So that's, I don't know if I've answered your question.
Well, sometimes you think that you get a certain amount and then you work forward with that amount. So 1.3 is approved, and you allow that design to fit within the amount of money that has been approved for the project. And it might be, the project shrinks, not actually gets bigger in size. So, so I have a concern about that. And the second concern I have, and this will speak to some longtime history, not only on the council, but as a resident of this town and a resident of Marston's Mills, that there have been concerted efforts in the village of Osterville not to provide housing that is affordable for our residents. Very specific endeavors to prevent housing that is affordable for all. So I'm very concerned that this large investment for families is being done in a village that doesn't really value them. And I just want to make that statement from the dais because I am very concerned about that and that if nothing else, I would have thought there would have been a little bit more discipline in staying within a budget. So I will not be able to, I approved the 1.3 million. I was okay with that, but I don't find myself being able to approve this expansion of the playground and the money required for it.
Thank you. Councilor Ledke?
I find this project as wonderful as I find that sewage project. And I'm being serious, and they're both in Osterville. I think it's wonderful that they're taking care of their nitrogen and they have the money to do it. And it somewhat alludes to, again, what was brought up by Heather as to do with the Highness Port Civic Association has the deep pockets and they put up the pretty signs that are not enforceable, but they're pretty. So this is wonderful. I am supporting this 2 million percent. I have four children that grew up in this community. The only place you could go was the Centerville Playground. Playdates were always organized around that. That's dated, that's being upgraded. The only other place are the schools, but when the school's in session, you can't use this. I spent some time living in the Dallas area with my children. What you've designed here reminds me so much of those playgrounds, and I would take them there. It also reminds me of the playground that's by the bridge, the Bourne Bridge, that's just fantastic, and it just comes full of life. This is what we need. It's the lifeblood of our community. Children will come there from throughout, they will, they absolutely will. Playdates will be arranged. It's fantastic. You're finally with the program. And Lindsey mentioned the skate park, which is dreadfully horrible, okay? And we need to upgrade that. But this is an amazing thing for the children throughout the town of Barnstable. And I think it's great. My only comment is something that seems to be what we do in Barnstable. We love porta potties, and I hate porta potties. We see them at the beaches, when, even when we have bathhouses, we close the bathhouse and put porta potties. I'm not sure. I see tennis courts and other things. Why can't we have a seasonal restroom there? That would be, it's just, it's just a thing that bugs me about Barnstable is we love our porta potties. They sit there in the parking lots of our beaches in the summer, and it's just gross.
And just to address that, the CPC, thank you, has approved us moving the bathhouse and actually a basketball court on this site to a full application. So we will be doing that.
Oh, hallelujah. Okay, great. Well, I know what Paula said. I am totally, totally for this. It will, it will, it's just what we need for the lifeblood of our community to take care of our children and give them a really, a playground that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Penn?
Yes, way back when Councilor Neary asked his question about, are all kids welcome here? I just was going to be a little sly and just ask if there was going to be a, a bus stop for the shuttle bus taking the kids from Hyannis out to this playground. That's, you don't need to answer. I just made my point.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Council Starr?
Thank you, thank you, President Tamish. Yeah, I'm, I'm with Ms. Schnep here, that when, when you, when you start a project like this, usually you come and you ask for design money. In, was it April of 2023, you came and asked for 1.3 million dollars? We were shown designs. To quote the rationale, "The proposal coordinated with the community is for installation of new accessible playground equipment, including a shade structure, benches, tables, patio, accessible surfacing, retaining wall, landscaping, sidewalk, water bottle filling station, and an accessible pathway." It sounded, it sounded like we were voting for something that, they were drawings, you know, it was ready to go. So I don't know why it went back into the design phase.
Well, it was, it was a concept. I'll just say that. It was, there were certainly drawings, but that's more of initially a concept that does get some research. But yes, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it was never told to us that it was a concept. We thought it was, we were voting on, that was it, and that's all we're going to have to pay for it. So I'm a little surprised it came back. So that's not your fault. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Crowe?
First, Richard, thank you for your presentation. I will say that Richard came up with the final coloring and that kind of stuff for the base and everything else, and it was, it was really a well-done job, and I appreciate that for doing that and made, brought it all together. We're be looking at a number of playgrounds coming in the future, Centerville and, and I don't know, maybe in Marston's Mills. The incredible cost of these things, especially with the port-in-play issue, is something that's eye-opening for a lot of people. And I think that's where a lot of the costs come from and that kind of thing, is that, is that anything done in this town, we were talking about putting, I think, four speed bumps in Osterville while we found out each one is $170,000. It's unfathomable, that's the cost of it, but that's what we're dealing with in the situation we were in. This is going to be a destination, and yes, everybody is allowed to come to the playground. It's a, we're, we're a village in Barnstable, and in fact, we would like people to come because it'll be vital for our village and the merchants there and the restaurants. The more people come and use it, the more chance that they'll increase revenue for those businesses also. So a lot of work has been done. We've been waiting 12 years for this. I understand that we I understand that we originally, this was in stages, okay? It was proposed in stages as far as the bathroom and the second, the basketball court, street hockey thing. So this is the, this is what we've come up with after the first stage. So I agree that these things are expensive, but I think we need the ability to have our kids have safe places to recreate. And I will be fully in support of other playgrounds and any other village that are desired by that village for the same reasons, and they will be expensive. But that's the, sort of the animal we're playing with, with this kind of, you know, Johnny can't scrape his knee anymore. That we grew up on pavement or gravel and that kind of stuff, which is sort of a sign of the times and sort of toughened kids up back then. It was actually, I think, I'd actually think we'd rather not have the port and play because it'll teach some of these kids a little bit of adversity, which would be nice. But this is the world we live in. We've got to worry about lawsuits and everything else. So that's sort of where we come. So I appreciate you putting this together. It's been a long haul. A lot of people have been, been active on this for many years. And I think what you see here tonight is the culmination of a lot of work and something that's going to be valuable to everybody in this town. And so I ask that you vote in favor. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. I recently read an article about helicopter parents taking their kids to college with actually buy an apartment or a house and live with their children at college and carry their children to school and back. So I hear what you're saying about adversity. I think, you know, having gone through the COVID era where people were isolated on tablets and phones and not out playing, I think this is wonderful. I think our community needs it. I think our kids need it. I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we kind of morphed from the rationale directly into questions without a formal invitation to the public to be heard. Is there anyone from the public here who would like to be heard on this article? Seeing no one, is there anyone on, no, okay. Oh, excuse me. Yes?
My name is Dave Stapanis, and I was just concerned. It seems like an awfully expensive playground, and I'm not saying that the town and the children don't deserve it, but it's looking to be really expensive. And what does it cost to maintain a playground like this per year? Is it going to require more hours from the Department of Public Works to maintain it? The elaborate different items that are used there, are they breaking? Are they going to be expensive to replace? Looks like a lot of work. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done, but at the same time, we need to take those costs into consideration, too.
Thank you. If you'd like to address that?
It's a good question. I can speak to it. Initially, for many years, there, other than, well, obviously, if something is damaged, we'd have to address it. There are no yearly maintenance issues other than what one might do with leaves and cleaning the surface, which the DPW would do, hosing it down, those kinds of things, washing it, making sure it's clean, not dirty. But, but no, the equipment is designed for at least 15 to 20 years of a life with the powder coat finishes. They have, unfortunately, you know, a limit on their life where they start to delaminate over time. But it's a 15, 20-year process for it. There's no painting that's required. So initially, there is, there is no, there is no maintenance or yearly, you have to do this or that to it that is required. We do have, under contract, a playground consultant, as I've told you, that does come yearly, at least, and inspects our playgrounds and looks for damage, loose bolts, things of that nature, areas of wear, which invariably do happen around swings where they'll push. And they notify us immediately and we repair them. But they're relatively minor things and we can repair them in kind with port and place material. But initially, there is no yearly maintenance. We will take down, at the end of the year, DPW, the shade structures will be removed like we do at the beaches and stored and then reinstalled, but all within and under the DPW's work process.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just one last question. Is it locked at night? Is it lighted? Or, I saw gates on there. What are the hours?
The hours will be effectively from, you know, dawn to dusk kind of thing during the day. This was discussed. We discussed it with Councilor Crowe, other members. The decision was made deliberately to not light the playground at night. One, for the residents that live around. Two, we don't want to encourage the use of it at night, which tends to bring in older kids. Even the lighting we have will be low-level lighting, at ground level, that will light up. So no, we did not want it to be a nighttime playground for those reasons. There is a gate. Whether it is locked every night or not will ultimately, I think, be the village's decision or working with DPW. But that, so that was the idea. And also to that and the equipment, I'll speak to that in a moment. One of the problems that often have had historically with equipment is that there are hiding places. There's a place to crawl under. There's a place to not be seen. There's a place for older children who might have different ideas of play to use. This equipment, usually like that tensile spider web type, there's the concept of being enclosed and hiding, getting away from your parents, whatever, you can't get me in here. But at all times, you're really visible. Even that little igloo structure has holes throughout it so that one can see. There's really no place to hide in it. So no, we're not lighting it at night as a nighttime playground.
Thank you.
Answering Betty's question, that was one of the things we originally decided to do when we put the playgrounds, the ballfields in there. We didn't want to encourage after dark play because this is bounded by First Street, Lowell Road, Lowell Road, and West Bay. And we were very concerned that the neighbors would be disturbed by what's going on there. Well, there used to be a school here, so people would play there, but we didn't want these things going past dark. And that was mainly for that reason. And so therefore, the lighting is not going to be encouraging people to come out. And so, and we also had neighbors and abutters on our committee, a few of them on the committee deciding what we're going to have here. We do have a concern, because it came in in the last minute, about the noise from these bell or these music instruments. And I talked with Richard about that as something that we may or may not cut back on because of that reason, because we don't want to bounce off buildings and being annoyance to the neighbors, as pickleball is at this point. So we want to have less than that. So that was the reason behind it.
Okay. All right. At this point, I will close the public hearing and call for a vote. Pass.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Berdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Okay. That's 11 yes?
The motion does pass. It, thank you, Richard.
Thank you indeed.
Thank you. It is 8:39. We are going to take 10 minutes.
Councillor Bloom, if you could read in 2026-049, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business with a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item 2026-049 is an appropriation order in the amount of $94,966 for the purpose of funding the costs associated with hiring seven new patrol officers in the Barnstable Police Department.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. If there's no objection, I will open the public hearing, and I would recognize Chief Jean Chawley for the rationale. Please.
Good evening, President Tamish and council members. The department is requesting an appropriation in the amount of $94,966 to cover the costs associated with hiring seven new police officers. We just finished our first non-civil service hiring process, and we were able to select two lateral transfers who both started their roadwork today. They're done with their training, so that's exciting. And we have three officers in the Plymouth Police Academy. They started about three weeks ago, and then we'll be sending one new officer to the Cape Academy, which starts December 1st. So the costs are to cover their training, equipment, medical evaluations, and their psych evals.
Thank you. At this point, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this matter? Seeing no one, is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing no one on Zoom, I will close the public hearing. Council discussion. Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Counselor Burdick?
Hi. Hi, Jean. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
I think I know the answer to this question, but just for the sake of it, what will the ongoing budget impact be for these seven officers? And it's already been accounted for in the remainder of fiscal year '26, and then what will it be like in '27?
We did have money in the budget for the -- these are existing vacancies, so we're not adding to our authorized strength.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Councillor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. Just want to congratulate you and the town of Barnstable on your new hires.
Thank you very much.
And future hires. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Go to a vote, Madam Clerk. Can't see you behind the flags there.
Councillors, Neary.
Wait, we can't. Sorry.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnap.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yeah.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Big yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Twelve yes. The motion does pass. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, item 2026-050.
Are we doing this?
What I'd like to do is, we're not going to be able to hear this item tonight because the paperwork has not come back from the Department of Revenue certifying the balances, so it's going to have to continue to the next meeting. So what I will do is, I will open the public hearing, and then I would have a motion to continue the public hearing to November 20th. So if I could have a motion.
So moved.
All right. So, motion has been made and seconded to open the public hearing. Could I have a motion to continue the public hearing to November 20th?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to move it to November 20th. I have a roll call vote, I believe, or any discussion on the motion to move it to the 20th for a public hearing on that date. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Councillors, Penn.
Yes.
Schnap.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
That's twelve yes.
Thank you. Mr. Millen, I was negligent. I didn't know if you had anything to add to that, or if you had any comment other than to just move them to the 20th?
Good evening. Thank you, President Tamish, and good evening, town councillors. Mark Mellon, Director of Finance. Yeah, just to give you a little update as to where we stand, we are in a revaluation year for townwide property values. This happens once every five years. Being a revaluation year, the Department of Revenue takes an in-depth look at all of the information that we use to create the valuation tables in our mass appraisal system. This includes sales data, income and expense reports, and they're getting through it. There are 69 communities across Massachusetts under a revaluation year this year, so it's a lot of work for the Department of Revenue. And today, in fact, they called our Director of Assessing, asking for the detailed income and expense reports for how we -- that we use to value apartment complexes in particular. So they take a deep dive in a revaluation year. So it takes a little bit more time, and we hope to have pre-certification of our values before your -- in time for us to do the public notification that I talked about at the last meeting, so that we can act on these on November 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we would be looking to move 2026-051 again to November 20th. Could I have a motion, please, to move?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? This is not a public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Pass.
That's twelve yes.
Thank you. The motion does pass. Okay. Counselor Schnep, if you could read in 2026-052, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of new business that may be acted upon by a majority vote. Item number 2026, rescission of previously authorized loan orders ordered that the unissued loan authorizations in the amount of $38,622,221 of the following loan orders be rescinded as written.
Thank you. I would recognize Mr. Millen, I believe, presenting.
Yes, thank you, President Tamish, and I would be remiss if I did not thank Councillors Schnep, Turkelson, Neary, and Mendez for your challenging and thought-provoking questions that have kept me on my toes for the past several years in some cases. I really appreciate you, your service to the town of Barnstable, and treating me as a professional for all those years. I truly appreciate that, and we will miss you. This item is -- kind of falls into the category of housekeeping. Every two to three years, we look at the authorized and unissued loan list that we have, and we rescind the ones that we are not going to borrow. This happens in the case of projects where we receive grant funding. Many of those in the airport fall into that category, where the FAA and the DOT, Federal Aviation Administration, Department of Transportation, paid for those projects, so we didn't need to borrow. Some of the projects came in under budget. We didn't have to borrow all the proceeds or the loans that were authorized. And in some cases, two school projects in particular, the school department is going to rescind, asking us to rescind a couple of those loan authorizations because they're going to repackage those projects and come forward with a future -- with a new appropriation at a future date. So this is just cleaning up our books, so to speak. We plan on going to market in February of 2026 with our next bond issue, and we'd like to have all of the loans that we're never going to borrow off that list because it just -- it makes us look better for creditors. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions on Counselor Ludkey?
Yes, thank you, Mark. I have a couple of questions, kind of based on Sam Wilson's presentation earlier in the evening. I'm not sure if you listened to that. I see the two kind of water system ones, and I see, you know, just minor portions of the full payment. What are those two? The -- I don't know if you see them there. They're the Simmons Pond and Stray Way wells, and then the activated carbon filtration. What are the parts that are being rescinded? Are those the airport and the county paying us? Is that the settlements from lawsuits? What are that? What are those?
Those were predominant -- those are projects that came in under budget.
Okay, so that's just squarely a budget thing?
Yes. We didn't need to borrow all the proceeds to fund because we didn't spend them all.
Okay. But some of those projects, aren't they being funded by, you know, from the lawsuits and things? But that's not accounted for here?
Yes, not accounted for here, yeah. There are so -- there are many appropriations for our water supply system and others. These are just two smaller ones that we've completed under budget that we're asking to rescind the remaining balances.
Okay, great. That's really good news.
Any further discussion on my right? Vice President Clark?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you, Mark, for this presentation. For these projects that tend to run over budget, you can't take this money and apply it to them. It has to come to us again. Is that how it works?
Projects that go over budget.
Because you're showing us those that are under budget, or...
Yeah, we can't -- we can't spend in excess of an appropriation, so I'm a little unclear as to what the question is.
No, I understand. Thank you.
But if a project's funding is inadequate, we have to come forward to the council for a supplemental appropriation, as you saw this evening with the Osterville Playground.
Got it. Thank you.
Any questions on my left? Seeing none, Counselor Ludkey?
So just to follow up on Counselor Clark's question, where does that money go? The two water ones that came in under budget, where does that money go?
So it's never any money that we received in our treasury because we never borrowed it. And so this is like, you're going to take out a mortgage. You've been authorized to take a mortgage out for a million dollars, but you end up buying a house for $900,000. You didn't borrow the other $100,000, so it's no -- you want to get that off your books because you don't need that. You don't need that hundred -- additional $100,000 anymore, and that's what we're doing here. We never borrowed any of this money that we're asking to rescind. It's just borrowing authorization that we had. We could go out and borrow it if we wanted to, but there's no need to because all of the expenses associated with these projects have been completed.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnap.
Yes.
It's twelve yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Counselor Ludkey, if I could have a motion, please, on 2026-053 and 2026-056 to move both to a second reading, 11/20/25?
So moved.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move 2026-053 and 2026-056 to a second reading on November 20th. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Pass.
Schnap.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you. While we're moving things, could I have a motion, please, to move 2026-055 to a public hearing on 11/20/25?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Councillors, Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Pass.
Schnap.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
The motion does pass. Counselor Ludkey, if you could read in 2026-054, please?
Yes. This is new business. It may be acted upon by a majority vote. Item 2026-054, resolve approving a conservation restriction to be granted by Marie Malo to Barnstable Land Trust Incorporated upon 5.58 plus or minus acres of property at 755 Lumbert Mill Road in Marston's Mills.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I recognize the attorney.
Can I be recognized first?
Quick look.
Thank you. I just have to announce to everyone that I submitted a closure -- a disclosure of conflict of interest because I'm a good friend with Marie Malo. So the conflict of interest was filed with the clerk, clerk's office, if anybody wants to see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We're all set on that. Attorney LaRosa?
Evening, councillors. Tom LaRosa, First Assistant Town Attorney. Marie Malo owns the property located at 755 Lumbert Mill Road in Marston's Mills. Ms. Malo plans on donating as a gift a perpetual conservation restriction to Barnstable Land Trust over 5.5 acres of her 6.6 acre property, with the area associated with the existing single-family home being excluded from the conservation restriction. The town will not be a party to or have a role in the CR, and Barnstable Land Trust will be responsible for monitoring and enforcing the conservation restriction. Chapter 184, Section 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws requires that a conservation restriction held by a land trust, such as BLT, must be approved by the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs and in Barnstable, the town manager and the town council, so that the conservation restriction may have a perpetual duration and otherwise have the protections afforded under state law. The Secretary of Staff has already approved of this gift CR. This vote would provide the town council's required approval of the conservation restriction and authorize the town council president to sign the conservation restriction on behalf of the town council. The 5.5 acre conservation restriction will cover the entire property except for a point acre area along Lumbert Mill Road on which the single-family residence is located. No structures exist on the CR area except for a shed. The 5.5 acre CR area is within a Zone 2 wellhead protection area as defined by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and the conservation restriction will provide protection for water supply purposes, habitat, and open space values. The conservation restriction area will be maintained in its natural character without any new structures. any new structures. Public access will not be included in the conservation restriction under the terms of this gift, due to the property's continuing use as a single-family home. Kelly from Barnstable Land Trust is here, if you have any questions of BLT. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on my right? Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish, and I appreciate Ms. Malo for this donation. I see by the map that there's the easement for Cape and Vineyard. It's mapped out. How is that affected?
Yeah, so any easement that's on the property is not impacted by the conservation restriction, if it's an existing easement?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Bloom?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levecq?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
It's 12 yes.
The motion does pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors.
At this point, I would like to invite Counselors Neary, Schnapp, and Turkelson to.
Yes.
Meet me down at the podium.
Uh-oh. You better run now.
At this point, it is my distinct pleasure, and with some sadness, to present three of our departing counselors. Counselor Mendez is not here tonight, but depart, to present our departing counselors with a plaque outlining their years of service with the town. Counselor Paul Neary, eight years of service from 2017 to 11/20/25 as Town Counsel for Precinct 6. Paul, we appreciate your service, and we'll get a couple of pictures here.
Counselor Schnapp, also eight years of service. The class of 2017, I guess you were both in, correct? Thank you, Paula, for your service. You have been certainly a great voice for the, regarding housing, and you've kept everyone on your toes, their toes with your questioning, so thank you very much. And Counselor Turkelson, Precinct 2, two years of service, and to say that you've kept everyone on their toes is an understatement, but that's the kind of questioning and the kind of digging into things that we need, and we appreciate your service and your diligence.
I would invite the counselors to take their seats, and if they'd like to make a comment, I would certainly appreciate that, and I would appreciate any comments and any of the Why don't we start with the, the dean of the departing counselors here, Counselor Neary?
Thank you, President. First of all, I'd like to say to this vast crowd we have out here in the, in the town hall, hopefully somebody's watching at home. I, I want to applaud the folks that actually went out here in town and continually go out in town. Heather Swanson, Swanson was here briefly, congratulating, obviously, the new counselors that are coming in. You know, one of the strange and unusual honors that I had on my first run-through, and then later, was the phenomenon of someone actually going to a voting booth and circling that little circle, you know what I mean, that represented your name? And that truly, to me, was, is really quite an honor. I'm hoping that, and I'm sure this will happen, that the new, the four new counselors that will be coming in will represent their precincts well, but more so to lean on the knowledge that's here, already on the dais. The processes, votes, and things that went on historically kind of get lost, you know, with the change of, of council. Folks that come, folks that go, and history is really a unique thing. Many, if not all, of the, I call them the major votes, right? We're here, and 98% of all the stuff that we have votes on, they're unanimous, right? And then you get the ones that are particular, you know, whether it be zoning. You have big votes that come along. I think sometimes what happens in these type of formats is the history of the effort, information that was passed, discussion that went on, gets lost, because all you remember is the vote, right? The result of the vote. But you don't realize that those votes went through either almost unanimous, or 12 to 1, or 11 to 2, and we're all just one counselor. We're just one of 13. In that way, I think that there can be some pushback, maybe, is probably not the right word, but, but maybe creates a little bit of dissension. I, I've been really, really fortunate to spend eight years with both Counsel Levecq and Counselor Schnapp. Prior to them, we had Eric Steinheilber, and we had Jen Cullum. They both termed out, as well as, oh goodness, who was the past president as well, from Kootuwa, Jessica, yeah?
Jessica Rappas.
And I know, coming in, knowing absolutely nothing about the ongoing, the runnings of the town, that, that the veterans really can, can give you some kind of history, and I think that's really, really important. So with that, just kind of a pause for thought. Secondly, we are, as a town, unbelievably fortunate for, and this, this won't earn me any, any bonus points, because I'm not going to be here anymore, but to the staff. I mean, seriously, the staff here, if, if, you know, whether it be the managers, the, you know, the high-level folks in all of the departments here, we are incredibly fortunate. If, if that body of, of people were out in the market, they would get scooped up in a second, and we would be, we would be worse off for it. So I guess, finally, I'd just like to say, you know, you come in as strangers and you go out as friends, right? And I think that that's really the key to, to community, and I, I just, I wish and I hope, and I'm sure you will all get together, and you've got some big stuff coming up ahead of you. You've got a lot of financial stuff that's coming up, and you're really going to have to form a coalition of, of discussion, deep thought, on how we're going to address a lot of this, you know, whether it be the, the sewer-ing, the budgets, the whole bit. It's very, very important, and, you know, fortunately, we're going to have, hopefully we can wrap up Mark Milne. I tried, we tried to get, we tried to get our town manager for 10 years, is what I was hoping for, but, you know, he, he was, it might have been a little bit too long. Anyways, thank you so much for the time. It's bittersweet, and I will miss you. I will check in from time to time. If that, if that Osterville Playground comes back for another vote for more money, I might be standing out in front of you, all right, yelling at you, okay? Just want to say that, all right? But God bless you all, and, and again, thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right?
Thank you. Counselor Schnapp, the co-dean of the class of 2017.
Mr. President, I, I want to start, I feel like I'm at the Academy Awards with my acceptance speech, because I really want, I have so many thank yous to, to make tonight. And I want to start by saying that the work that we do on the dais is supported by so many people, and some of them I'd like to publicly thank, and knowing that I will not touch everyone, but our town administrator, Cynthia Lovell, does a remarkable job in, in making us prepared for our meetings, and it, it seems effortlessly. We show up, you know, our, our folders are ready to go, and I, and great debt to, to her work. Our two, our clerk and assistant clerk, Ann Quirk and Janet Murphy, have been steadfast in their recordings of our meetings and keeping us on track, when sometimes we, you know, veer off a little bit. And then our communications staff, Lynn Poiant, Sarah Beal, and all the folks that record our meetings, you know, I, I can't tell you how many times I've gone back and looked at some committee meeting or our meeting to find out what, what happened, or, you know, it does take some time, but it's great to have that resource in our community. And again, I want to echo Paul's thank you and indebtedness to our staff. They're amazing. From, from the, you know, most of our interactions are with the town manager, assistant town manager, the directors, but all of the folks, you know, it is a source of great pride, the people that work for this town. And when you think of all the things that get done, you know, our, our Council of Aging, or, or it's Adult Community Center, and, and the programs that they run to help our seniors, animal control, think of how many people, and I am one of them, who had, may have lost a dog temporarily, and they find them for you. I mean, it's just, it's, it's amazing. The responsiveness of our DPW, you know, if you've got a pothole, I mean, if someone contacts DPW, it gets taken care of in a very short order of time. Now, some of the longer road projects, it does take a while, but, you know, there's a lot of money that, and planning that has to go into it, but again, really top-shelf employees that we have in this town, so I, again, a great thank you to them. And one of my favorite tasks as a town council, and I hope some of you, if you haven't done it, we usually have an employee recognition in December. It's a great opportunity to thank our staff directly. I also want to thank our myriad committees that we have. They're all volunteers and, and that staff these committees, our regulatory committees, the amount of work that, planning, ZBA, thank you, Jake, Conservation Commission, licensing, you know, the amount of hours, I would have to confess that I think some of those volunteers spend more time than we do on any given month, you know, the number of meetings, the documents that they have to review. And then we have our advisory committees, a lot of hard-working people that are contributing to our town on a continual basis. I mean, we had the three presentations today. I mean, these are very dedicated individuals working for our town. We also have other volunteers that come out, that earn at our committees, and I'm very thankful for them as well. And lastly, I want to thank all of you on the dais. We don't always agree, and I think that's healthy. I think it's, you know, for us not to always have a unanimous vote is a sign of a healthy council, where we have some debate. I think we're, we can all improve, and then this is not just here locally, but we have an issue, I think, nationally, in being able to trust each other and, and respect each What more can I say? I, I feel like I, I can trust everyone here, and I hope going forward that is the spirit in which the new council can do their work, because we've got, we do have some tough decisions to make. And I will be right along with you if you need to start asking folks for money, so, I mean, don't want to do it right away, but if need be, I'll be around. So thank you again, and see you, see you soon.
Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. I don't have a lot to say. I'm, I'm the least-yeared person up here. Obviously, you've all done a great job of explaining how amazing this town is on a level of how this massive machine works, day in and day out. I do want to thank the residents that have reached out to me, who have written me and thanked me for my service. I think that's really the best compliment you can get, is when people reach out to you, because they are at the top of the food chain. And for that part, I think I will miss this role. I have said that my 80-year-old self will be more grateful than my 52-year-old self, and I can assure you, I'm very grateful for this honor to have served, so thank you.
Thank you. You know, I, I would like to, to thank all three of you. Paul, you, you mentioned the knowledge, the institutional knowledge, and that is so, so important, that what you and Paula, you know, contribute is to how things have been and, and what happened in the past. And Kristen, you've kept us on our toes, there's no question about that. You know, questions that I never would have thought of in a million years, you've had, and it's like, wow, why didn't I think of that? So, you know, my heartfelt thanks to all three of you, and, and best wishes, and I'd like to open up to anyone on the council that would like to have anything to, to add to that. I know Mr. Els would, would like to speak. Why don't, go ahead, Mac, why don't we do that? And we'll see.
Good evening, and thank you for recognizing me, Mark Els, Town Manager. I want to say thank you to each of you for allowing me the honor of continuing as Town Manager and working with you, day in and day out. It's a real privilege. Thank you so much for recognizing the staff. Without them, I mean, I get to be Town Manager, but quite honestly, we're all important, we just play different roles, and our staff is second to none. The role that you all play frontline, as really the interface between us and the public, is a difficult one, and it's truly frontline, unlike probably any other area of government. You've done it well, and I live here, I've raised my family here, I work here, so I just want to say thank you, truly thank you. I know the time that you put in, I know what you gain, but you give up by doing what you've done, and you've made a difference. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice President Clark?
Thank you. A few words, unfortunately, Jeff isn't here, but Paul, and Paula, and Kristen, as you leave public servant, as, as Barnstable Town Counselors, your contributions have been valued and impactful. And I have learned from all of you, the, the healthy constitution of our, of our group is, is reflective with our different perspectives and life experiences. And Kristen brought a very fresh, invigorating perspective to our deliberations, and Paul has seasoned input from your business venue and your business aspects of, of making our evaluations of difficult decisions sincere and, and, and healthy. So thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Crowe?
Thanks, President Tamish. I just want to reiterate that having now spent a couple of years doing this, and knowing what is required to put in by all of us, that, that we thank those that are, who have served, and, and it is important we recognize that service, because we're all out here working our best and doing our best for constituents, and, and whatever our positions are. are, that's what we're voted for, and, and I think you've all done a wonderful job representing your, your opinions and your, and your stances, and, and I commend everybody who does in service in this, in this position, because it's a lot more work than many of us realized, and, and it's important to our town. So, thank you all for doing it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, I guess. Will the record indicate that that motion was made by Counsel Neary, Schnapp, and Turkelson?
Who seconded it?
And a second. All in favor? Well, I got a roll call vote. No, 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 we, we have a roll call vote.
Counselors. Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levecq?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you.